Welcome to the December 12, 2017 meeting of Titusville City Council at 6:30. We do have a quorum. I'll declare this meeting come to order. Is Dr. Tibbetts here? I do not see her. She was scheduled to say the invocation, but in lieu of that, we'll have a moment of silence, Please join me in the plaid.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business is approval of minutes. We have two regular city council meetings. Anybody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of this regular city council meeting. I have September 26, 5:30, September 26 at 6:30, and October 24 at 5:30.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion or corrections? Not hearing any, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign passes unanimously. Special recognitions and presentations. Mr. City Manager, that's right, you're up.
Yes, sir, we have Mr. Beavers here to present the second quarter from Project Based Learning, AKA Space Coast Fab Lab. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Beavers. How are you, sir?
Good evening, just fine, thank you. Thank you for having me. Well, I have a short intro video and then a PowerPoint to kind of go over what we've done the second quarter, where we are, and it was done by our students, but I think it kind of tells us where we are. Wait a minute, this is the PowerPoint, not the video, I think, but that's okay. Let's start there. We started out with testimonials from some of the...
You want to talk to him?
That's okay. He doesn't have the video? We'll go with the testimonials and the PowerPoint.
Flexibility, sir.
But these are some of the different clubs, some of the different users, everything from homeschool groups to the Vex Robotics Clubs, and highlighted in there, and I'll get you all a copy, but we've highlighted some of the things they didn't have a place. What they found is through the economic development zone and yourselves, this has provided a space for many clubs that had almost given up as to a place to have it. We found that we had the equipment, and they have, as far as the robotics go, and they had now up to, I believe, and I'm going to fast forward a little bit through these, which I'll make available, but it's a number of clubs. The Vex IQ Club, which is shown there in the Titusville location, and they're up to 35 members now, and that helps us because the big thing that we need now are the volunteers. If you remember, we started this similar to another location, and that runs on 3,000 hours of volunteer time every month. So the biggest thing we need are volunteers. The best way to get those volunteers are clubs and activities in the evening. We have the STEM Club, Park Avenue Christian Academy. We've done a number of classes which bring the students out. Sadly, it's too small for me to see many of them, but everything from Tinkercad, Arduino's electronics, 3D printing for both adults, for children age levels. This is something, if you recall, the last time I was here, we talked about your funding, a laser cutter for the facility. If you go back a couple classes to that Tinkercad where they design it, what you have here are pumpkins that they first learn to CAD and draw, and they actually cut these pieces out. It scales it in a program, and they cut it on a laser cutter and then assemble them for the holidays. It's a great way for both youngsters and their parents to learn about the different technologies that are available to them. We do a lot of high-tech stuff. One of the things that we've initiated here in Titusville is Game Night, where we unplug everything. They're board games, and it's families, parents, children, Monopoly-style for some of us, and we do that as well. So we want it to be a genuine community activity. This is one of the electronics classes, and it's geared primarily towards the high school level, I believe, on this one. Although we have a number of different classes, we try and have age-specific classes, but at the same time, there's a number that, for example, here, this is a laser-cut paint and you first create it and then paint it. Minecraft, I believe it's called, swords. That's a father and daughter. So we want to encourage multi-age groups and family activities as well, but we also, I'm going to go backwards one, very specifically target age groups on Arduino's electronics. So hopefully getting the best of both worlds. We want to create a family environment, a community environment, but we also want to have specialized classes for each individual age group. And I believe that's a, that is a tower-building exercise shown there. Again, these are more of the laser craft classes. You can see on the right as they start on flat pieces that they've laser-cut, they paint them, and assemble them. We're adding quite a bit as far as the senior side, too, which is one of the immediate goals that we're looking at. Now, this is a build a flashlight. Believe it or not, the top centerpiece is a complete flashlight without a battery. That's a super capacitor, so it squeezes, turns it on. You plug it in with a cellphone charger, which most every high school student has now. These are boxes that were made there, and what this was is a, they designed the box, they do origami flowers, and the boxes light up with a three-colored LED that they can program to change colors with. So they can basically make any type of pattern they want. They have the art side, they have the electronic side, bringing as many technologies together in these classes. Everything you see here are actually classes that are being held and have been held in Titusville. Again, the Arduino is one of the backbones. That's a little small microprocessor, which is a great introduction. It brings a lot of the projects to life. Anybody with a PC can program one. It really brings a sensory perception to your electronics. It can tell when you walk in the room, it can tell when the lights are dark, it can tell when it's light. You can make a door-knock sensor that opens your door for you with a certain pattern. You can have an alarm go off from smoke, from carbon monoxide, or play the songs that you want or recognize them. So that's a super-expensive piece of equipment. They're about five bucks. We have literally given away hundreds of them to the students, and it's a great introduction to electronics. Here they are working, and this is the electronics lab here in Titusville. And one of the points I'll make on that picture is those are, that's not father and son, those are just two users. This has an appeal to virtually every age group. It gives you a sense of accomplishment, a sense of completion, when you've learned something and you build something. This was one of our Minecraft nights. That's a, for those of you who are not familiar with it, it's a game youngsters and a lot of teenagers play. They have different characters. On the right is actually about a, well, you can see by the chair, approximate size, that's a nightstand book case holder that they build at the Fab Lab. And on the left are the swords, which is one of our most popular items for them to design and lay out and create and then paint. The laser cutter, again, that's been added on the left. You can make everything from simple plaques. To the right, they are puzzles, very much more on the art side. So what he has there is a little puzzle piece that comes out. So events, awards, and moving forward, these are the classes that we've been holding. Going forward, we're doing the annual teacher open house. We try and do as many community activities. We presented to Brevard Schools at the zoo. We've created quite a few field trips here. We have field trips. I want to say we've had six or seven here at this point. We have them booked as far away as Boca we're on coming up. The neat thing is, almost every one of the field trips that have come here have scheduled for a repeat school, and we've getting unbelievably good reviews on the ones that come and do it. That's a blank one. Wait a minute. There we go. Burn Science and Technology Charter School. Now, this is something a little bit different in Oak Hill, simply from logistics, and it's kind of new to us. We've only, we've done it with Pineapple Cove down in Palm Bay, and we're doing it with these ones, where we go onsite to do the field trip, and they've scheduled it every week or so, where we come out and we do the activities with them onsite. And it's just basically a transportation issue to move a bunch of youngsters. So we'll go onsite out there and do that. Playa Linda, which is coming up this year, we're going to try and coordinate that. We are also doing the Maker Fair. Space Coast Fab Lab now has the Brevard Maker Fair, which this year is scheduled in Palm Bay, was the first one. Next year, we'll be coming here, and we're going to try and tie that in to Playa Linda. Now, and one of the things I would point out about Playa Linda, any local festival, any time we can gain exposure to the community, one of the biggest things that you'll find, there's very few people that won't take their youngsters or come participate in a class that's absolutely free, if and only if they know about it. Whereas we've had articles about us that say we're the best-kept secret in Brevard. These types of exercises, certainly the Maker Fair, Playa Linda, gain us the most exposure and the most use, and it also gains a lot of exposure for Titusville. As I said, we have some very high-profile schools as far away as Boca, and we told them, well, because they have very specific laser activities, well, these, you know, there's a cost to these. Money's not an object. They're literally transporting their students from Boca up here. That's the type of things that gain some recognition, and it also helps fund a lot of other programs for a lot of other schools. So it's a good thing to have, but these are what make those schools, those people aware of it, any type of event. We've had a lot of classes. At this point, I would say we are at least two-thirds functional. We are now into the shop side, we're limited in the welding. Definitely, laser is becoming extremely popular, but the classroom side as well. The Palm Bay Maker Fair, which I mentioned, actually Playa Linda will have a booth down there, as Titusville will, and the Titus, some of the Titusville schools will have booths down there, because we're trying to make it a Brevard event. And that'll move around, at least if I continue to operate it and work that, it'll work throughout Brevard, so it's going to move around quite a bit. These are some of the schools that have attended, some of them more than once. Along the way, we got a certificate of special congressional recognition. We won that for this quarter for advancing STEM education in Brevard and developing. One of our next big plans is to have the community garden, which I know we discussed about initially, moving forward, and that's, again, a community-wide, where they come in and have somewhat of a community garden, hopefully, again, mixing families and age groups. And that's pretty much what we've done this quarter.
Very good, sir. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you're a very capable speaker, so. Can you tell the audience about your overall vision for all of these things? Because I have heard more than you were showing up there.
Yes. Well, and not to be flippant, but to be honest, my overall vision is driven by the participation. My overall vision, from the first day we started to now, has changed. The field trips were nowhere near as large apart, certainly bringing folks in, and it is not, and it cannot be a cookie cutter. We can't do here what we did in Palm Bay. It is driven by the need and by the market. The lasers have been considerably more in demand here. In the PowerPoint and certainly in the video, there's pictures that you've got the shop almost lined. Well, we had 25 carloads of people out there for the lasers, and that was just the initial. We've never had that down in Palm Bay. But my vision for this, hopefully, is to work it into the community and to combine ourselves and some other of your local entities into a much larger, almost camp, if you will, or village that works hand-in-hand with people like computers, advancing education, and basically fill the needs. I don't want to say, because I think it's a mistake, we're going to do this and offer this and offer this. What I'd like to say is, I want to put ourselves in a position to answer any need of any student, and what we tell people there, our job is to, whatever you wish to design, whatever you want to make, whatever you want to learn, whether it's a submersible, or a drone, or anything in between, we're here to help you, Tom, to the best of our ability.
And yes, that's the point, that you're not only teaching children or young people, you're teaching people of different age groups and getting them interested in what the present world is into as far as work being done and jobs being out there, so they can get them.
It's driven, and part of the, you know, the North Brevard Economic Development Zone is the primary funder of bringing us up here, and obviously, their reason is job development. Hopefully, what we're learning along the way, and we do have a lot of fun, and we make a lot of neat things, but when you're making a flower pot with origami and electronics and laser cutting, the idea, and it's really the same in a university, when you get people working cross-disciplines, cross-ages, cross-background experience, and working in a team to build something, those are skills that translate to the job market. So yes, we try and do that, but I also like to say, you know, we hide the textbook in the project. We want them to have fun, we want them to learn, certainly, and that's really, you know, the parent company of Space Coast Fab Lab is project-based learning, emphasis on the learning. But we try and present it in a way that it is fun, and it's something they remember. And secondly, when they build something, they have a sense of achievement that's genuine. They've achieved something, they've learned a skill, and they have a tangible asset, whether it's a lighting-up flower, or a quadcopter, or a submarine, they have something that they hold that's of value to them because they created it and they went over that STEM and the math and the studies to achieve that reward, and it's a real reward. It's not self-esteem for building self-esteem. They've earned these things, and that's something that you really can't give them in most cases.
Any questions from council, from Mr. Beavers?
Yes, sir. First of all, I want to say, as I'm listening to you, I feel like your passion and enthusiasm for the program has not waned at all since you first presented. I'm very excited about that. The second thing is, having been with Brevard Public Schools for 35 years, it's always on my mind, and I see your field trip list here, and I don't see that yet. Is there a plan to collaborate more with Brevard Public Schools, or is that going on already?
As I said, we had a booth at their, at the zoo. We are, and I apologize, because I'm not the one doing that particular side, Michelle is, but we, there's a, it's a program for advancement. They actually met down at Palm Bay, right next door at Larson Motorsports.
Okay.
Yes, we are very actively pushing through the Brevard school system, and again, what I found, the best thing that we have promoted and what made it really explode and start to take off is Facebook. When you have a teacher and people coming back and parents posting these items up, after we did the first couple, we got inundated by other teachers, hey, what would it take to get my class here? They'll call directly, and that seems to be the best way to cut through the red tape of a government agency, is to have that teacher want to have those students there, and that's working for us. So we're really pressing directly through to the teachers, and if there's a better way, I'm absolutely open to it.
No, absolutely not. I think you're right. I think the word of mouth, so to speak, the word of Facebook, and then, as you go further, perhaps a contact in a meeting with some of the curriculum people or field trip people is what I'd like to see. I know what you do down there, and this has just been outstanding, and I would just like to get more public education involved with this as we could, and that would be Brevard Public Schools.
Again, anything that we can do to push this to even one more school, we'd love it. We have not had a single school that has gone out there that has not been pleased, or that has not tried to figure another way to bring more students. We've had as many as 90 in a day on a field trip in the morning at Palm Bay, and that evening, 46 out here.
Wow.
We've even scheduled them in the evenings to accommodate. One of the, it's one of the advantages of working with the private and the homeschool is that they can be a little more flexible Saturdays.
Sure, absolutely. Well, we're fortunate to have you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beavers. Thank you for your report, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Sir, in accordance with Article 6, Section 6.7 of the Titusville-Farmington LLC Operating Agreement, as a member of the TIFF LLC for the FY 2018 TIFF LLC budget and the 2019 and 2020 pro forma projections, are presented to City Council for your consideration. This budget was prepared jointly by the City and Farmington Water Resources Miami Corporation staff, and has been approved by the TIFFa LLC Management Committee, subject to the approval of City Council and Farmington Water Resources LLC. Intent of this budget is to provide an overview of the current financial status and the projection of revenues and expenses for the 2019 and 2020. In accordance with the operating agreement, the rates for purchased water were established in this budget and are based on the design, construction, and operating costs. In accordance with TIFFa LLC operating agreement, the adoption of the annual budget is an action item requiring consent of all members. It is therefore recommended that City Council adopt the TIFF LLC FY 18 budget as presented and authorize the mayor to execute the consent of the members. Have Mr. Stoffer here, as well as Mr. Ball, for a quick presentation.
Right ahead, sir.
All right, good evening. My name is Sean Stoffer, the Water Resources Director for the City of Titusville. I'm joined by Jim Ball, and he is the City's Representative on the TIFFa Board. We have a short presentation. As you can see from the drawing, TIFFa LLC is a limited liability corporation, 50% ownership by the City of Titusville, and 50% ownership by Miami Corporation. Previously, before the Area 4 wellfield, the City of Titusville got its raw water from the Area 2 and Area 3 wellfields. Both of these are single-source superficial aquifers. We also got water from cocoa, and for many years, this was the, these were the raw water sources for the City of Titusville. Some of the characteristics of a superficial aquifer is unconfined, lies close to land surface, they're typically shallow, not a very thick aquifer, and that makes it susceptible to contamination as well as saltwater intrusion. And so some of the problems that can occur with that, and what we saw here in the early 90s in the City of Titusville, we had population projections going up, and we had problems with our water quality. Water quality was degrading. In 1999, the City commissioned a study with the objective to find a new water source that was safe, reliable, and economically feasible. The results of that study identified five alternatives. The most expensive alternative was to increase our purchases from the City of cocoa to meet future demands, and the most feasible showed out to be the development of the Area 4 wellfield. At this point, the Area 4 wellfield is completed. It's been in operation for, I believe, six years now. I include this map just to give everyone an idea of where the wellfield is located without actually identifying the locations of the wells. You can see the light green color, that's the City of Titusville, and those are the city boundaries, and then the orange polygon up in the corner of Brevard County, that is where the wellfield itself is located. So that just gives you an idea of the distance between the city and the wellfield itself. At this point, so in 2010, TIFFa LLC was established, and this is a corporation that is owned half by the City of Titusville and half by Farmington Water Resources. And at this point, I'm going to hand it over to the City's Representative on the TIFFa Board, Mr. Jim Ball.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, a pleasure to be here again with you to talk about water. Tonight, it's not about the water that most people in Titusville like to think about, and that's the water that's very important and near and dear to all of us, the Indian River Lagoon, but it's about the water that most people in Titusville don't think about. They don't give it a second thought. They turn on that spigot and they expect water to be there. And that's such a critical function of the city and the municipality, to provide safe, reliable, secure source of water for its citizens. I would say, even though the study was done in 1990s, the quest for a secure, adequate-capacity wellfield to service the future needs of Titusville was on the agenda back when I sat in one of your chairs in the mid-1980s. And I think a lot of wise decisions by previous councils and a lot of very hard work by your talented and former city attorney Dwight Severs resulted in what I believe is a very creative solution that the city employed to get this wellfield in partnership with Farmington. So I'll just say, I'm so honored to be your appointed representative, to be the eyes, the ears, the voice when needed for the people of Titusville and for you. and for you as the elected representatives. We made a, what Sean, you know, would probably agree, was a transition over the last year from what was still the final stages of development of this wellfield into what is now pretty much becoming a routine operational asset for the city. And I would just say I'm happy to come any time. I'm so pleased with the performance of city staff in operating the wellfield and so happy with the cooperative nature of our partners in Farmington. I can just tell you, it's working great. So, with that, any other comments?
Thank you, Jim. I think the, so if we could go back to the slide presentation, please. Tonight, we're here requesting that you adopt the FY 2018 Tifa budget, as well as authorize the mayor to execute the consent of members for the budget. As far as highlights in the budget, Member Ball explained that we are in full operation. The budget is a status quo budget. Expenses are down a little bit from 2017, and that's showing a slightly reduced cost and the rate that the city pays for the water. But in general, it is, it's a status quo budget, same as last year. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the budget or Tifa itself.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any questions, gentlemen? None? All right, I'll accept a motion. If anybody would like to do that.
I move to approve the adoption of the annual budget and authorize you to execute the consent of the members.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. And thank you very much for the presentation. I hope everybody understands that this is our water for growth in the future, as well as replacing some of the water we've been getting from the City of Cocoa, which has gotten extremely expensive lately with a surcharge on top of it. So, we started this, as they said, many years ago, and Dwight Severs was the instigator of it. And so, it's a very positive thing that we brought along to a very positive point. So, thank you. Next item, before we do the next item, clerk, would you read the procedures for public comment, please?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-dutational public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Sign-up and oath cards are located on the table in the back of the council chamber. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes on all items.
Thank you, clerk. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, this is the Titusville Environmental Commission's semi-annual report, and I don't see a presenter, so this will be as written.
Okay, and we have those in our packets. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept the Environmental Commission's semi-annual report.
I have a second.
Second.
Before we do that...
Any discussion? I see a light. Number Nelson?
One light. I don't know about the other members up here, but I was approached by some people asking that we replace the TEC with a sustainability board, and I think they've talked to part of the people up here. Before we look at that, I would like to give the TEC a chance to come up with some concrete proposals. And with that in mind, I would ask that maybe we give Ms. Busaka some direction, or staff some direction, to maybe give the members of that particular board. Basically, we need them to do some research and come back with some recommendations, some solid recommendations. One of the things the sustainability board was doing was they were looking at ways to cut costs by using solar energy. And so, I would like to see if they can come back with a definite, this is what we can do in our public buildings, our public facilities, maybe using solar energy, but that means they need to do the research. They need to look to other cities like Satellite Beach and Palm Bay.
It's a phone.
That's the phone?
It's a phone.
Yes, a phone. Mr. Lady, is he the guilty party?
Yeah.
But I would like to see him do the research, the actual board members do the research, talk to other cities, Satellite Beach, maybe Melbourne, maybe Palm Bay. I understand, at least in Satellite Beach, that the sustainability board has come back to council and with a proposal that would save money in the long run using solar energy. I don't know if it's possible here, but I would like to see that board come up with some concrete facts and figures. And I would like to see them come back to council with a report for the first quarter to let us know how far they are along in that process and maybe give us some additional guidance.
Very good.
So...
Anything else?
Does that work?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, but Vice Mayor has his light on.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, and Member Nelson, I would concur with that. Sure, just having hard targets. I think Satellite Beach has a great model for that. It's been effective, it's been appropriate. From a policy standpoint, as a council, I think it's qualitative and quantifiable when you put it on a target and you figure out which direction would you go. I think that, long-term, we would probably achieve more, that could do more, even given the resources of the people that we have, which is great, you know, it gives a chance to do that. Additionally, I think there's some concerns on their constitutional revisions. There's actually some policy right now that might hit the Constitution that I would love to hear the policy, what the board thinks about that, and how they would implement, or what they would recommend, i.e. a right to clean air and so on and so on, where mandates may come from Tallahassee through constitutional revision and whatnot, but at the end of it, how's it going to fall? How would it be legislated? How would it be so on and so on? So, I think right now is a great time to really pursue that, so I'm in full support of that.
And I'm just gonna...
Number Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm just gonna say, I'm looking for some concrete data from them. This is how much it's going to cost, this is what it might save us, that kind of information. And they stepped up to that board, and, you know, I'm hoping they can do that kind of work.
Anyone else like to speak on this? I think it's a great idea, and I certainly, does anyone have any comments contrary to you? Nope? Okay. You have the information, ma'am? And we need a motion to accept the Titusville Environmental Commission's semi-annual report as presented.
We did.
Okay, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously.
Mayor, if I could suggest, if this council is going to give direction to TEC, could we put that in a motion so it's clear in the minutes what that direction is, and we provide them those minutes, they understand exactly what it is you want them to do? And have you vote on that?
All of them, or generally speaking?
No, just in general.
Just a general thing? Was that your motion? I don't remember.
Can I just say, that was my motion?
Yes, I would like council to vote on it.
Okay. Then I would make, I would, my motion would be that we direct the TEC to look at solar energy and public facilities and come back with some concrete data on what it would cost, what it would save, whether it's feasible, and that they do the research and talk to other cities who are engaged in this kind of activity.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Mr. City Manager, sir, next item.
Yes, sir, the North Brevard County Hospital District Board Appointment. The term of regular member Peggy Crooks expires on 31 December 2017. She has expressed her willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for a four-year term to expire on 31 December 2021. In addition, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners appointed Billy Fitzgerald for a term to expire on 31 December 2021. This appointment was made on 5 December 2017 and must be confirmed by the City Council.
So, we have two items. The first one is reappointment. Do I have a motion on that?
I would move to reappoint Peggy Crooks to that board.
No, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. The next item, it's not down there. Go over that second one again, sir, I'm sorry, I lost it.
Yes, sir. In addition, Brevard County Commissioners appointed Billy Fitzgerald for a term to expire on 31 December 2021. This appointment was made on 5 December 2017 and must be confirmed by the City Council.
Do we have a motion to?
I would move to confirm Billy Fitzgerald as a member of the board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
The North Brevard Economic Development Zone Appointment. The term of regular member Pollock Hartwell will expire on 31 December 2017. She advised that she does not wish to be considered for reappointment at this time. There's currently one applicant on file for your consideration, Mr. Alan Matroni. He has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board. His application is attached, and he is in audience today should you have any of your questions.
Yes, Mr. Matroni is here. Does any of council have any questions? Mr. Matroni, is there anything you would like to say?
If there are no questions, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion?
Move to appoint Al Matroni to the North Brevard Economic Development Zone Board.
All those in favor, say yes. Let me get the last part out before you do that. I'll speak faster. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you, sir. Just for the, for recognition for Mr. Matroni, I would share with you, and it's been a privilege to serve on council, and I'll share with you that this is one of the most exciting appointments that I have seen take place. And the reason that I say that is Mr. Matroni has done a great job previously on that board, and I am glad to see him return to that board. And I think that he will be welcome and do a great job for North Brevard in the direction that the board, I think, intends to go. So, I'm, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Ms. Diesel, Member Diesel?
Having been on a lot of committees to pick a lot of people to be on boards in various aspects, it was refreshing to have you come and meet me separately from everyone else, obviously, but to meet us last two weeks ago. And then to have you present, because if you're watching on the television or if you're here, you can clearly see that an awful lot of our appointments go without recognition of who they are. And I appreciate you, the effort, and clearly, that says a lot to me.
Thank you, sir. And I echo that, of course. I've known Mr. Matroni for about 40 years, and I should admit that, shouldn't I?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty years, that's right. I just got the numbers wrong. And he was, I was involved, actually president and then, well, director, both things, of the Space Coast EDC, and Mr. Matroni was on that board and chaired it several times, so I know he's well-versed in economic development. So, I thank you for putting your application in, and we need a vote now, right? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Just thought I'd make you nervous.
I need you to not put all that sugar.
Next item, sir?
Planning and zoning resignation and BA appointment. There's currently one vacancy for an alternate member of, for the public-at-large board for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. This term will expire on 31 July 2019. Mr. William Kilpatrick has expressed his desire to resign from the Planning and Zoning Commission and serve on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals as an alternate member from the public-at-large. This matter came about due to a misinterpretation by staff as to the understanding of Mr. Kilpatrick's desire to serve only on the Board of Adjustment Appeals as an alternate member versus the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member. There are no other applications on file for your consideration.
So, I believe we need two motions on this. One is to accept Mr. Kirkpatrick's resignation.
I would move to accept the resignation of William Kirkpatrick.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. And also to appoint Mr. Kilpatrick as an alternate member of the public-at-large, from the public-at-large to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for an unexpired term that will expire in July 31, 2019.
Move to appoint Mr. Kirkpatrick as an alternate member on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Petitions and requests from the public present. Does anyone have anything they would like to speak to that isn't on the agenda? I see none. We'll go to the next item. Consent agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Would you like to have any council members pull any items?
Oh, right, yes. Does any council members want any items pulled from this?
Do we need to remove item I, which was the civic center?
No, we do not. We just have to change the vote because that is a, I think that's the one that's the resolution, or is it? No, it's another one. There's another one that's the resolution. So, we'll do a roll-call vote.
Yes, sir. On this one, the actual CRA recommendation was not to approve that change order, and what the consent item says is to approve the budget amendment in the change order. So, you probably will have to pull that.
Oh, okay. All right, let's pull item...
I.
I.
And then?
Okay, for, sorry?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, and item A.
And item A, all right. A and I. Any other items that anyone wants pulled? So, we need a motion.
Sir, we'll need to check to see if there's any cards.
Okay.
No, sir.
No cards? Do we, you'd first approve the items, or you read the items?
I can do it either way, sir.
Read the item first.
Okay. I'll read consent agenda items B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and J. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the budget amendment and the receipt of the federal FDEP grant in the amount of $13,046 to fund the replacement of a sanitary pump out infrastructure at the Titusville Municipal Arena. Approve Resolution Number 20, 2017, authorizing the mayor to approve and execute the updated Water Resources technical specifications and providing for effective date of January 1, 2018. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the bus stop maintenance and pedestrian ingress and egress easements to Brevard County. Consent agenda item 8E, approve and execute the attached utility easement agreement with Florida Power and Light at the city garage at 101 North Singleton Avenue. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the purchase of a 2018 solid waste automatic side loader in the amount of $280,544.50 from Next Tran Truck Center of Orlando, Florida to replace an existing truck as approved in the FY 18 budget. Additionally, approve the associated budget amendment. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the award of contract with an initial term of one year and four optional...
and four optional years to JB's Lawn Control Incorporated of Titusville, Florida to perform mowing and landscaping maintenance services within the CRA and state roadways, the amount of, in the amount of $85,424.24 per year and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the budget amendment in the amount of $85,000 for the payment of gate charges associated with the disposal of green waste and construction debris through Brevard County Solid Waste Department. Additionally, authorize the city manager to issue any purchase order required for this action. Consent agenda item 8J, approve the highway maintenance agreement with Florida Department of Transportation.
We have items B, C, D, E, F, and G. We have a motion and a second on that. There is no resolution.
You don't have a motion, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Thought we did that at the beginning. May I have a motion on those?
Move to approve consent agenda items B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and J.
And can I have a second for that?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign?
Mayor, Mayor, C was a resolution.
Oh, right.
So we'll need a roll call vote because you're going to approve Resolution Number 20, 2017.
We need a roll call.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
All right, we have.
Consent agenda item 8A, the city's land development regulations are mute on the use of shipping containers for residential structures. With the increasing availability of shipping containers, staff believes the city should have a clear art, clearly articulated policy on using these structures for single-family and multifamily structures. Staff recommends that you approve advisability for staff to develop an ordinance regulating shipping containers as use for residence.
Item 8A, any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I'm not crazy about having shipping containers used as residences. So my vote would be that we have an ordinance saying they cannot be used as residences. And I'm aware that in Seattle, they use them basically as a residence in homeless areas, homeless camps. But in a residential area, I don't see any reason to have those.
All right. Next person to speak is Member Diesel.
I see this as an opportunity to get out ahead of the curve before this becomes a big deal and I concur with Member Davis that we, we make that move. We, we get ahead of the curve and I'm not interested in that either.
Davis?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I agree.
You had the wrong name, is what it was. Next is, Mr. Stokel?
Yep, just wanted to echo. I am in agreement with Member Nelson and Diesel.
Anyone else that wishes to speak? I will accept the motion. You said you wanted to make one.
Do we need a motion? Okay, then I would move to develop an ordinance regulating shipping containers as residences, prohibiting them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously.
Consent agenda 8I, at the CRA Board disapprove the budget amendment to change Order 1 for Civic Center Concept in the amount of $6,252.65.
Okay, anyone wish to speak on this item? See not, nothing up there. I'll accept the motion.
I'd move to disapprove budget amendment and change Order 1 Civic Center Concept.
I would like to second Member Nelson's motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Again, passes unanimously. Next item. Ordinances. Say again?
Shipping containers.
Shipping containers, I'm sorry.
Nine A.
Okay. Nine A, yes, okay. Ordinance 44, 2017, Mr. City Manager.
City Attorney will read the ordinance, sir.
Yes, sir. This is ordinance number 44, 2017 relating to shipping containers utilized as accessory structures. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida amending the code of ordinances relating to shipping containers by amending Chapter 28 zoning, specifically amending Section 28, 357 detached accessory building structure and Section 28, 365 parking or storage of motor vehicles, recreational vehicles, boats, airboats, or trailers in residential districts to prohibit shipping containers as within residentially zoned or used properties, specifically amending Section 28, 373 temporary storage units relating to shipping containers and renumbering subsequent sections. Amending Chapter 34 procedures specifically creating Section 34, 353 nonconforming structures, shipping containers, and renumbering subsequent sections. Amending Chapter 37 definitions to add the definition of shipping container, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances and effective date and incorporation into the code.
This is the second reading, final public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 3-1 with a six-month period from the effective date of the ordinance in which shipping containers with valid building permits or final inspection shall be removed, be screened to ensure that the container is not visible from any property line or be altered so that the container is architecturally compatible with the primary structure. On 22 August 2017, council approved advisability to regulate the use of shipping containers as accessory structures in residential areas. The city's land development regulations currently do not specify the type of structures that can be used as accessory structures. Then in the last several years, the use of shipping containers as accessory structures utilized for storage have been increasing. There are several issues to be considered relating to accessory structures. The building code requires structures over 120 square feet to obtain a building permit. If shipping containers, which can be as large as nine feet by 40, are properly anchored and the property owner can obtain a permit to place one in both residential and commercial areas. If an accessory structure is greater than 20% of the square footage of the principal structure, is required to be architecturally compatible. The proposed ordinance prohibits the placement of any shipping container as an accessory building, as an accessory building, storage building, or living unit on residentially zoned or utilized property. Licensed contractors may use shipping containers for temporary housing of equipment and materials during construction as authorized by the city building permit. Ms. Busaka is available to give you a quick presentation?
You have a presentation, Ms. Busaka.
Just wanted to briefly explain, ask if you had any questions about the P and Z recommendation. If you do, I'd be happy to answer that. Okay. I want to say that we have done our research and according to our research, there are three instances in which shipping containers have been approved as sheds. One was approved in April of 2015. The other was approved on July 2017. And there was a third that was approved in 2015. So there were two in 2015, one in 2017. The one that was approved in July 31, 2017 is the, in the neighborhood of most of the people who've come to speak this evening. And if that is not, a permit is, a request is not made for an inspection at the end of January of 2018, then that shipping container will be in violation of the code and code enforcement would begin to take action. At the last meeting, I discussed how we had come to the suggestion of a three-year amortization period, which is of great concern, was both of great concern to both the P and Z and several of the speakers this evening. And just to highlight what I did was I looked at local shipping containers and what those would cost to both deliver and to purchase and I came up with an estimate of about $8,000 installed. I also, and that was for a 10 by 40 shipping container. That included the shipping and delivery as well as the cost of the container. Now, there are lots of different containers, some of which are in better shape than others. I took what I could find to be what I considered the average of the most expensive shipping container. Then I took a look at all of the available storage units in Titusville and took the most expensive of those shipping, of those storage units. Four 10 by 10 shipping, I'm sorry, I'm having a rough time with my memory. I did that for Mr. Lurie's. Four 10 by 10, that's what I want, storage units, would cost approximately $8,690 a year. And that would be roughly equivalent to one 10 by 40 shipping container. So assuming that my numbers, which I tried to make conservative but which could still be off, staff is recommending that there would be a three-year amortization period. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Busaka? Yes, go ahead, Member Nelson.
Actually, I have the question for Mr. Broom.
Go right ahead.
Oh, hate lawsuits. I mean, part of my job, but I hate lawsuits. Are we going to be able to, what are the risks of us ending up in court over this type of a statute?
I, I don't know that I can judge what the risk is, but I can tell you anytime you prohibit an activity, there is a risk. As Ms. Busaka stated, there are certain of these structures that have been permitted. It's probably debatable about whether planning staff believes they should have been permitted to begin with, but they've been permitted. What you're doing by this action, if you approve this ordinance to prohibit them, you've now created what's called a lawful, nonconforming use. The use that was lawful because it was permitted. And if you pass an ordinance to prohibit them, they now become lawful, nonconforming. Currently, our code in Sections 34, 345, and 34, 346, currently under our code, lawful, nonconforming structures can be maintained and repaired, but not can be extended, enlarged, or expanded, and cannot be replaced or repaired if they're damaged by more than 50%.
Okay.
Or if they're abandoned. So typically, that's how you deal through your code with a typical lawful, nonconforming structure. It can stay, it just can't be replaced and we can't have any more. So imposing this amortization schedule or a time limit on these is a more direct way of eliminating these structures. And in my opinion, you should only really impose this time limit if you determine that these structures do constitute a nuisance, that you believe that they are so incompatible with residential, in other words, the industrial nature of these structures are so incompatible with residential that you would rather see them removed and prohibited sooner than later and removed from the residential area because in the public interest, you feel that's appropriate. So if it is indeed this council's decision to prohibit them and you do feel that they are so incompatible, it's a balancing act. So what you're doing, recognizing that someone may have spent money on this permit and has this structure that's been permitted and recognizing that investment or that owner's right and balancing with that, that with the public interest and the compatibility this has created and a potential nuisance this has created in residential. So that's a discussion council needs to have. And if you are going to impose an amortization schedule, you need to do that balancing, weighing that, that interest they have versus your public interest in these industrial structures and residential.
Is there a problem with us doing the six months? They need to conform with either some type of screen where they can't be seen or making them architecturally compatible with the residence? Is that a problem?
You're right. This ordinance has been tweaked. The one before you does provide a couple of exceptions for those owners that do have permits.
Okay.
If, if the nuisance is that industrial nature and recognizing that and balancing those interests, this provides that if a whole owner of a structure who does have a permit and if it's deemed lawfully nonconforming, they could modify that structure, make it architecturally compatible with the principal structure in the residential neighborhood and therefore be allowed to maintain that structure without the three-year restriction provided it is architecturally compatible. That's one option that has been provided in here. The second is that if the structure is not visible from the property line, whether it's relocated, screening, fence landscape to the point that it's not visible from the property line, also if you believe that that removes that nuisance or that incompatibility because it's no longer visible as to the, just these lawfully nonconforming, right? If you determine that that meets the public interest and they do it within a period of time, yes. But it's really important for council to have that discussion, make that determination of nuisance or compatibility issues and then balance that interest with the amount of time. Like I said, I'm not aware right now that we have amortization schedules for lawful, nonconforming uses. This would be unique and in my opinion should be used sparingly based upon that level of incompatibility you, you feel this creates.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Not seeing any. I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have cards on this?
We have nine cards, but we only have two speakers.
Okay. Would the first, call the first speaker then?
Tom Borstrom, and he's going to be speaking for several individuals.
Sir, will you come to the microphone, please? Right there. And your name, sir, for the record? Tom Fernstrom, 4875 Winchester Drive.
Thank you, sir. Did you want to condense some, some of their time into yours or can you do it in three minutes?
Okay, well.
You can, you can take more time than that if some of those people that are speaking are, will give you their time.
All right, y'all shut me off when you think I've talked enough, right?
I don't know.
Okay. We, we went to the planning and zoning meeting and we agree with what this is. Now, the only thing we asked for is some clarification as to screening because that can be left open to all kinds of interpretations as we already know. And architecturally compatible, the same thing. What we were suggesting is site it with the same type siding that's on the house, put a little A-type roof on it. And it's good as far as we're concerned with what's in our neighborhood. Or if they want to plant trees 12 feet high all around the property to hide it, that's okay. So if you all can find your way to work this out that way, we're okay.
Okay.
And if I miss anything, Sean will bring it up.
All right, sir, thank you.
That's all we're asking from you. We don't want to give anybody a hard time or create problems for anybody, but we want to have a fair, fair for everybody and everybody gets a Merry Christmas.
Great. Anyone have any questions for this gentleman? I see none, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card, please, clerk.
The last card is Sean Greenwell.
My name is Sean Greenwell. I live at 4970 Winchester Drive. The reason why I'm basically here is because this structure happens to be in my neighborhood. It happens to be in the main thoroughfare of my neighborhood. So a lot of people that live in my neighborhood affect it. I'm currently the president of Phase Two. I represent 52 of the homes that are in Cathedral Plains Estates. I appreciate the consideration. I appreciate the planning and zoning conversation that we had. Like Richard said, this is really all about compromise. I, I do believe this is a problem that the city faces, that if we don't get a handle on it together, it is only going to get worse. Ms. Busaka happened to present some statistics that, you know, might put a value on a shipping container. I might have some alternative statistics that says it really isn't $8,000 to get a shipping container. I called and found one for $2,400 delivered from Apopka into my yard. The only constraint was I had to wait until after Christmas because all the shipping containers are taken. The price of a shipping container isn't based on the shipping container being brand new. The guy will sell you one that is leaking. the guy will sell you one that is leaking or is not leaking. A non-leaking one is more expensive than a leaking one, but you can get one that's leaking for a thousand dollars, once again, delivered. So, I think this is an issue that we all need to be sensitive to, and I do appreciate the fact that you're considering it. I am in favor of the ordinance. Like Richard mentioned, I believe that this is about compromise. I believe it is about recognizing that there's this issue, but there are already three permitted shipping containers within the city of Titusville, and when we were here the first time, the regulation really didn't have this compromise in it. Through the council's recommendation, through the discussions with planning and zoning, I believe we did reach a good compromise, which says that they do need to be architecturally consistent within a short period of time. We had a lot of conversation and some alternative opinions at planning and zoning about what architecturally consistent was, and we got to where we really considered other sheds that somebody might be able to go buy at Walmart or Home Depot. And those sheds don't need to have this argument about being architecturally consistent, because you don't go buy a shed that is industrial like a shipping container is. They sell you a shed that is already architecturally consistent. I may not appreciate that the one in my neighbor's yard looks like a red barn, but it is architecturally consistent, and I wouldn't come and ask him to remove it just because it looked like a red barn. But this shipping container is a nine, nine-foot-by-forty-ounce industrial shipping container right in the middle of a residential housing development, that's really not appropriate for that type of environment. So I am in favor, I appreciate the fact that we were able to compromise. I would ask council and the folks today to consider that the planning and zoning voted on it, it wasn't a unanimous vote, but almost unanimous, and I do think that the planning and zoning folks came to a reasonable recommendation, and I think that the, the current wording is a reflection of that as well.
Any questions of this gentleman?
I have one.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me. Mr. Greenwell?
Yes, ma'am.
The ordinance that's provided to council does not include the recommendation from P and Z for the six months. So are you supportive of the ordinance as written, or the planning and zoning recommendation?
Yeah, so... So let me ask you about that. So in planning and zoning, right, we came back and we said, hey, it sounded like the three years was a little too long. I, I thought that the alternative was, within a six-month period, they needed to make it architecturally consistent.
What the ordinance currently says is, yes, sir, within six months, it must be architecturally consistent or screened, but if you choose not to do that, that allows it to remain permanently. If you choose not to do that, then it can be there for three years and as it is, and then it must be removed. And I believe that both you and Mr. Fernstrom are really in support of the P and Z recommendation, not the ordinance as written.
No, so, yeah, so if that clarification needs to be made, and, and I apologize, it's a little difficult for me not, not understanding how this is...
We understand.
I am much more in favor of planning and zoning's version of the writing, and I would tell you that the audience members were much more in favor of it as well, and I think that was much more of a compromise that we reached in planning and zoning, and that's what was reflected in the planning and zoning vote. So I am in favor of that wording that came out of planning and zoning. That, that is my, I appreciate the, the clarification, thank you very much.
May I?
Yes, sir. Yeah, ma'am.
The gentleman that held the container?
Yes, ma'am.
In his yard, he was at the P and Z meeting?
I, I do, I, I don't, I don't know who, who was there and was not there. One lady that got up and spoke, her, her argument was not about that shipping container, her argument was that the restriction of future shipping containers being all shipping containers within the city limits, to her seemed to be overly excessive. And that's her only argument during that discussion was on that particular point, not about this particular shipping container.
Okay.
If I could?
Please.
I want to know that we have notified by mail each owner of the shipping containers that have been permitted. I have spoken with the owner of this particular shipping container, and they had talked, they have a lot of things going on in their lives, and they talked about perhaps making it architecturally compatible, they have, but they have a month in which to get that permit, and I reiterated that to the owner, and hopefully, they completely understand, but we did write to each person, notified them of the meetings, and provided a copy of the ordinance to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Appreciate the time.
Anyone have anything else? I see none, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Since that was the last card, I'll close the public hearing. Any further counsel discussion?
I guess I better...
Go right ahead.
I'm, I'm slow at pushing buttons. Ms. Broom. So the ordinance is recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, would there be a problem with that?
In my opinion, the shorter period of time that you provide the owners to, to get back that investment, the more susceptible you are to a successful challenge. That's about the best way to put it. So first, if you're gonna come up with the amortization, it must be based on information provided to you that you're gonna weigh, such as staff provided you a basis for the three years.
Okay.
So it shouldn't be arbitrary.
Correct.
But also, to answer your question from previously about the risk of, of challenges, I can tell you, because you're currently most lawful nonconforming, and typically are handled to the extent that they can exist until they are damaged more than fifty percent, or become abandoned, or deteriorate, the factor imposing this, yes, you are subject to challenges, and I can just tell you that the shorter period of time you provide, the more likely a challenge, I say more likely to be successful, but more difficult it is to, to defend that time period.
So if we were to do a time period of, say, one year, it may not be what the citizens would love to see, but it may be something that's more sustainable.
I would, if, if council wants to do one year, I would challenge you to provide a basis for why you chose one year, based on the information you have before you, as opposed to...
Three years.
An argument that that was an arbitrary choice of one year.
Okay. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Member Diesel.
I think I'm in the same quandary, coming up with a timeframe. I feel like those three or four people who were legally, bought their storage unit and, didn't do anything wrong, all of a sudden, and we had a speaker last time speak, and he made sense to me, that all of a sudden, we're telling him, no, too bad, we're changing the rules. However, I agree with the change of rules. I, I don't think they belong in a residential area, you folks don't need to go past one every day. The question I have is, how long is the right time to fairly give those people who legally bought their unit, there was no ordinance against it? And so now we're gonna change the rules on them, I reiterate, I agree with that change of rules, but what's a fair amount of time? Six months seems pretty quick. Three years might seem kinda long, but then we've gotta come up with some theory or equation that states why we pick a certain amount of time.
Well, again, it's, it's the basis for the amount of time, but it's also balanced against the degree of incompatibility or nuisance that you feel you are trying to abate. That's the balance, okay?
Wasn't that, may I ask a question? Wasn't that the reason you went through all of the time specifications with the money and how long?
I did, but let me go over those again, 'cause it was very, I was very conservative. In the worst-case scenario, I believe that the, it would cost about eight thousand dollars to have a shipping container delivered and installed, and that's the new, new container, which new means one trip, and then they sell it. In the storage unit, I found units that would go anywhere from eighty-six hundred ninety dollars a year to forty-nine hundred sixty-eight dollars a year. So that was, I'm gonna round that off to about nine thousand dollars a year, down to five thousand dollars a year. I found shipping containers that were anywhere from five thousand to eight thousand dollars for new, and as low as two thousand dollars for used. And that would include the, at least the shipping, the delivery, I've been told that a crane is not always necessary, that one of these shipping containers was just rolled off of a truck. So the prices can vary substantially, and what I did, as I said, was be very conservative. If you take the most expensive shipping container and assume eight thousand dollars installation, and you take the most expensive storage unit, even if you went to two years, you would still have about nine thousand dollars for the storage unit, and about eight thousand dollars for the shipping container. So that's, but that's, but we were very conservative, and I want you to be able to, you know, weigh those facts. We are concerned that these are significant nuisances. Even if these look nice, they are still going to sound like a shipping container, closing its doors every time, it's not, these are metal shipping containers, these are not plastic, so we believe that these are inappropriate in residential areas and do have a significant nuisance factor.
So the final analysis on your recommendations for the amortization over time is how long?
I, I said, again, I recommend it three years, but if you look, I took the eight thousand dollar shipping container, and it's about nine thousand dollars for one year of a storage units that would be comparable to that.
Okay, but your recommendation is three years?
It was, yes, sir, I, I just wanna give you...
Because of what the attorney already said.
Because of the conservative nature, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could also point out, I believe there was one other thing that was added to this ordinance, about change of ownership.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we covered that, I just make sure that...
I don't believe we did.
During this three-year period, a nonconforming shipping container shall be removed from the property within sixty days of a change of ownership. So if, if they sell the property or foreclosure or lose it, and there's change of ownership, that three years would be reduced to sixty, it would be sixty days from the change of ownership, if that happens within that three years.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you were next.
Thank you. So I, I think I have a couple of questions on sequence of kinda where we're at with the one that's not been either inspected or is not a done deal yet. So my first question is, is in, in the practice of moving, as a resident, I presume they came to City Hall and said, I'm gonna apply for this, put it in their yard, and are waiting for final inspection, or was there code violations prior to them submitting for approval for it?
The one that is still outstanding, I believe, was cited by code enforcement, who said, you have thirty days to remove a temporary structure. The owner then said, great, we'll make it permanent, and went to the building department, who said, you can get a, a building permit for this. That permit was issued in July, and the final inspection has not occurred, and after six months of a final inspection has not occurred, and there has been no activity to move forward to come into compliance, then the permit would expire.
Do we know how long that thing's been sitting there prior to the initiation of that?
I'm sorry, I don't. I just know that the, I'm sure the neighbors could tell you, but I just know that the, the permit was issued in July.
Mayor, would that be all right? If one of them happened to know how long that thing was there prior to?
You can ask the question.
Does anybody know how long was there, how long has that thing been there?
Okay. Since it showed up. That particular one. The other two have been in existence for two years, so they probably shouldn't be an issue. This is the only one, as far as we're concerned, that's an issue. It was brought there July twenty-second on a Saturday afternoon, and it was slid off a tractor-trailer into the backyard. Monday morning, I called code enforcement.
Right.
And they came out and they cited it.
Okay.
And then the lady, the owner of the property goes to the building department a couple of days later, and on the twenty-seventh of July, they issue her a building permit. So that's had been, that's been my argument all along. In one section, it was cited, which was correct, and in the other section, it was permitted. So, in this case, we felt that six months to get this thing in compliance was more than adequate. And like I said, the other two, we're not concerned about, and I don't think that they're really an issue, when they've been there for two years. And so that's why we asked for the six month, and to clarify, you know, what siding would be, or, you know, remove it, or plant trees around it, and I think that would take care of the issue.
Thank you, sir.
Because that's only one person, and likelihood of them coming forward and doing anything is slim, very slim, I can tell you that.
Well, understand, sir, that, that we can't deal with, with personalities, and also that whatever rules we make have to go for everybody, whatever time spans and so forth will be for everyone that's, that in that situation, or in the future gets into it. So, thank you, sir, I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
So, and I, I guess where I'm going with that is that, I'm getting the impression it was retroactive in nature, and the only reason we're talking about this is 'cause somebody had one slapped in their yard and said, we'll just make this work under whatever language there is. I think that that's kinda what happened. So, I think my thought is on the, the two that have been existing for years in place, I, I would come at those probably differently. I would give those a longer time period to move forward. The, the idea on one that is yet to, I guess, to pass final inspection, I, I got some more heartache about that, so if we're in the middle of the process, I, I guess, twofold, one, I just have heartache, I gotta think that through a little bit more, but I, I have heartache on the, in the middle of the process, and so on, so on. I don't, because it was placed without approval by the city on the initial placement, I, I don't, I don't necessarily feel the, the need to assist as much, in contrast, as somebody had walked in day one and said, here's an idea we have, here's what I'm doing, I've approved, I'm approved, and now I'm gonna go buy it and put it in my yard. I think it's two different things, and so I, I don't see the need for the extension of time for the one that has been placed and, and did it so, did it in a way that they didn't bother to check on the first go-round, and so that's, that's, I guess, my problem. So, I, I don't know if it's legal to do. So, ones that are existing, so prior, prior to, right, 'cause I think I'm getting into a dicey area.
My opinion, that would be very difficult to do, I, I don't know that I could craft that. It would be different if an individual, if we're, there's a, a thing known as zoning in progress. In other words, if we were crafting the ordinance and they ran in and tried to put on their property while we were crafting, the ordinance hadn't passed yet, I would agree with you, that would not qualify, 'cause there are notices that we're crafting the ordinance. In this case, now, my understanding, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, it was the building offic, the code enforcement officer who deemed it a violation, had he asked the building department, is it legal, they would've said yes if it was permanent, and he obtained a permit before we began this ordinance process. Now, you know, that being said, I'm sure planning staff has their own opinions about whether they should've, any of these should've ever been permitted, because you don't allow truck bodies, you don't allow rail cars.
Right.
So it was an interpretation by the staff involved that this was allowed. So it, it's probably, might, you know, in a situation where everyone a hundred percent says it was a clear lawful right, but unfortunately, it were, fortunately, it was permitted by city, they did receive permits, so by that definition, I would say it was lawful nonconforming. But of course, you can weigh that in, in your decision about having this amortization schedule versus just making them standard lawful nonconforming.
Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
If I can suggest, we, we usually, by going along with the recommendations of staff, come out better, because they take all of the things and boil it down to something that may not be perfect for everyone, but legally works for everyone, I mean, will be defensible. So whoever is going to make the motion, I'd suggest you include in there the phrase, with the conditions as suggested by staff, to the initial part of it, which is the ordinance. Got that one?
I do.
Okay. I'm trying to make it easier.
You're not.
Oh, yeah, 'cause they're gonna put in, unless you wanna change them.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Ms. Busaka, this is for you. It was mentioned by one of the neighbors here. Could we, could you kind of explain what screened or architecturally compatible, what that means right now, if we were to pass it?
The screening, and I would like to, if, if we go with this language, I, they would have six months to put in some kind of screening, it would have to be, the, they would not allowed to... It would have to be, they would not allowed to have a fence over six feet tall. So that would have to be vegetated and they would have to, and it would have to grow fast because it would have to be in such a way that if I were walking around the property and I looked at it, I would not be able to see it. There is one of these three that's on a large lot off of Dixie Highway. It's about two acres. That one is probably pretty easy to screen. There is another one that, as you drive by, you can't really see it from the front of the house, but you can see it from the side. So they would have to do something, again, some kind of screening. And then the one that you, that we're talking about with the people that are speaking here, that's the one that is shown on page 343 of your agenda. And I think you can see that that is significantly taller than the fence. And this is, it would be challenging for them to put some kind of screening in here. Now, architectural compatible is interesting. The one shipping container that was on Dixie Highway, the staff brought forward to the Board of Adjustment, because it was the third such structure, accessory structure, not shipping container, on the property, and it exceeded the amount that was 20%, so it would have to come into architectural compatibility. The Board of Adjustment said, "It's okay, because this is a large lot. It's not easily seen and all you have to do is paint it the same color." The staff does not believe that that is okay on such a small lot as the other two are. So we believe that you would have to have some kind of pitched roof, that you would have to have some kind of material to cover up the corrugated nature of this so that it looked like it fit into the community.
So it would be up to staff to work with the homeowner?
It would be. And that is not something that we relish, because the beauty's in the eye of the beholder. But because there are a manageable number of these, we think we can work this out.
Okay. And then can I just clarify the numbers that you had again, if I heard you correctly, for a unit this size that we're talking about right now? You said would be, if we're being very loose with it, no more than $8,000 to purchase and have delivered?
I believe that would be a good number to use, yes.
Okay, and if we were to rent that same amount of space at a storage facility, it would cost about $9,000?
The most expensive, the least expensive that I found would cost $5,000 a year. So that's, there's a pretty significant range.
But that same amount of space that you'd be having?
Yes, yes. And I tried to stick to the North Brevard area, so this would be local in Titusville.
Okay. So roughly, if I'm seeing this correctly, about a year?
About a year would be a, yes, ma'am, it would be, that would be a fairly good. Now, knowing that, that we probably want to be conservative, we may want to go over the year, but three years was quite conservative, yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at a little bit. I want to acknowledge that the homeowner did go in, and if they did invest, I don't think they did probably, but if they did invest $8,000, I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to come in and say, "Just kidding, no, this is our new rule." But at the same time, as long as we can kind of see with that, with those numbers, that if they were to have gone out and gotten that same amount of storage space, you know, they're not at a loss. So I don't really feel comfortable with the six months. I think that's a little bit tight. Probably maybe 18 months would probably be the lowest I would go. But, and I agree with the other things that were added in here, the screening, the architecturally compatible. So those are my thoughts on it.
Okay. Member Diesel?
When the speakers were speaking, they used the word compromise a lot, and I appreciated that word. And realizing that we were looking at the three years, I, my whole thought would be, these got to go as quickly and fairly and legally as we can. And it just looks like we're being instructed that three years is as legally and fairly as we can, even though I would like to agree with Member Stokel if I had some way of justifying 18 months as the compromise. But apparently, we cannot do that.
I'm not sure that's quite correct. You can do it, but the three years is more defensible than the 18 months.
Well, and that's what I mean by not able to do it, because I don't have numbers and depreciation and all to go with that to say 18 months. So I would have to go with the staff until I can get some other data.
Correct. Member Nelson?
I think we can go with the 18 months, and I think the 18 months is, I'll speak for Mr. Broom, and he can correct me if I'm wrong. The 18 months does give them the opportunity to recoup that money. And it also gives them the 18 months to make a decision on what they want to do with that structure. It is a nuisance, you're right. I wouldn't want to live next to something flanging. It just is totally out of character with that neighborhood. So to me, it's an eyesore. And you have, it's a nuisance.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you said they had 18 months to decide to do with that structure, do you mean that you would also change the paragraph C, where it talks about shipping containers have to come into conformance with architectural standards, et cetera, with 18 months? Or would that still be a six-month requirement?
I would change that to 18 months. No?
So, so, okay, so, okay, as long as you guys figure it out and let me know, I'm good.
So I'm not sure if I'm following Ms. Stokel down there.
I think six months is a fair amount of time. If they wish to keep the structure, and it would go beyond, well beyond the 18 months, well beyond the three years at that point as lawfully non-conforming. However, if they decide, "No, I have no desire to do that," I think 18 months is then fair enough. They still are able to recoup their costs. But I don't think they need 18 months to try to, if they're planning on keeping it anyway, why don't you get that fixed as soon as possible, in my opinion?
Okay.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Did this right? Six months to get something on it, to make it right, and three years to get rid of it, I think is too long. I just think it's too long. I think you can reasonably do it more than that. I think a year and a half is reasonable. I think that that's fair market, we're in a place. And the rationale for that is, we live in a community where those, where shipping container, we live next to a port, we live next to whatever. If this was in the middle of Nebraska, I would argue a different steel. I think that the market is here where you can move something like that. I think that it would be reasonable. I also have a question on who determined, and this, I'm not trying to go down here, but the reality of it is, when we talk about doing building structures, right? So we're talking about improvements or so on and so on. Now we're into building engineering and as such, right? So as a person with a shipping container, I, it's not like I can go out and just go slap some wood on there and call it a day. So now we are into an engineered design and so forth and so on, which I believe is cumbersome as well. Not negatively. I think it protects our communities. But it's not just walk up, slap some paint on it, and we're done. I agree that it would be appropriate, because I, in my handy self, cannot put together hurricane structure, right, after going through this, that won't put boards in my neighbor's yard, especially if we're talking about in proximity as such. We did this with the gazebo's, or not the gazebo's, but where the chalice things. So I'm very leery of just saying, "Put some lipstick on it," because it's still pig, right? On the other hand, I'm comfortable if those adjustments are made courtesy of all the other building requirements that we would require, so that, number one, the community is safe. Step one. But number two, I think that that is going to be burdensome, make people make a choice on whether or not they want to invest in this or not. And being said, I think that if they're pushed to that choice, I think a year and a half is completely reasonable, because either you're going to go all in on it or you're going to dump it. I mean, that's, that's it. So I think a year and a half is very reasonable. I think that the burden as far as cost, there's also a burden of cost for the, what we're going to ask them to do to improve the structure. So I think that burden is at hand, whether, no matter what we do. So they have to make a choice on it. I would be better on the six months of, you have to have improvements by then. And then if, if you can, if we're going to, if we're not going to get rid of them, then can we meet a year and a half and shrink the distance on that? I think that that would be reasonable, to have them gone. To have them gone.
True.
Thank you.
I have a question with the city attorney. Would those lower numbers be, in your opinion, defensible, or is there a specific level that you would be comfortable?
There's not a black and white test. Honestly, it's, I'll defend whatever you do.
Well, you have to do that. That doesn't say anything.
As I said before, it is, it is a bit of, in my opinion, a balancing act of the nuisance and what you feel is in the best interest of your community and what you want to see and how quickly you want to see it. Of course, it's always more defendable the more time you give someone, that that's clear. But that being said, that is a decision this council needs to make. I can't make that decision for you, but as pay-
No, I'm not asking you to make the decision, and I appreciate that, and I certainly understand what you're saying. I just keep going back to the fact that Ms. Busaka came up with a formulation and numbers, and she didn't pick it out of the air entirely. She was looking for something that could be justified, no matter who looked at it. And, you know, we, we can say unobjectively, I guess, that we feel this and we feel that, but we're actually talking about a court of law and what they will accept and not accept, not, not us sitting here. So I would ask whoever makes the motion to at least take that into account. Member Diesel?
Actually, I was going to go to the city attorney as well, because when we started this, it seemed to me we were being told, or at least inferred, that we had to have some formula and stats to say why we picked this number out of the air. As, I think that was the term used, "Pick the number out of the air." I like the term compromise. I like the idea of going the six-month, 18-month deal, and I noted that earlier. And if we can do that, the sooner we can get rid of these, the better. But again, I go back to legally and fairly. So I would be for the six-month, 18-month plan.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion. I would make a motion that we go with the six-month to remedy, 18-month to remove, and go from there.
I think you also have to make a motion to accept ordinance 44-2017.
I will make that motion to accept ordinance 44-2017.
With conditions?
With conditions that we go to six-month to remedy and 18-month to remove.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those, oh, roll call. I almost got it that time.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. That was easy. Next ordinance. City Attorney, would you read the ordinance by title, please?
Next ordinance is ordinance number 45-2017, Dog Friendly Dining. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations relating to dog-friendly dining, specifically amending chapter 28 zoning, Article 1, general provisions, specifically creating section 2819, Dog Friendly Dining, allowing patrons' dogs at certain outdoor portions of public food service establishments, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for incorporation into the code, and providing for an effective date.
This is the second reading and second public hearing. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this action 4.0. In 2009, the city council adopted dog-friendly dining provisions consistent with section 509.233 of Florida statutes. During a code update, the existing provisions of section 59270 were inadvertently removed. And the proposed ordinance reinstates these provisions within chapter 28 of the updated code.
Ms. Busaka, just to answer questions. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff? I see none. Clerk, do we have cards on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't open the public hearing. I should have. Consider it open. And I closed the public hearing. Any further counsel discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd move to approve ordinance number 45-2017, Dog Friendly Dining.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. City Attorney, can you read it?
Ordinance number 46-2017, Extending the Moratorium on Medical Marijuana Dispensaries. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, extending the temporary moratorium on the establishment or operation of any medical marijuana treatment centers, medical marijuana dispensaries, or medical marijuana facilities within the City of Titusville, imposing ordinance 1-2017 and ordinance 16-2017, and providing for an effective date.
This is the second reading and second public hearing for this ordinance. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the moratorium extension 3.1. In November 2016, Florida voters approved constitutional amendment 2, allowing medical marijuana use within the state. On 10 January 2017, council adopted ordinance 1-2017 to enact a temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of medical marijuana facilities to permit sufficient time to develop regulations. The moratorium was extended by ordinance 16-2017 and will expire on 5 January 2018. Senate Bill 8A, adopted in 2017 special session, limits the ability of local governments to regulate medical marijuana dispensaries. In anticipation of legislature revisiting these regulations, council approved advisability to continue the moratorium for an additional 180 days. More recently, it appears that there may not be a legislative action on medical marijuana during the 2018 session. Therefore, staff is seeking council's direction on long-term policy on medical marijuana, which can be developed during the moratorium extension. It's recommended that implementing the ordinance to implement the board's policy also, also to rescind the moratorium upon adoption.
Staff, do you have comments? Nothing. I'll open the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions of staff? I see no lights. Clerk, do we have cards on this subject?
Yes, sir.
Do we call the cards, please?
Jonas Max Cassi?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name is Jonas Max Cassi. I live at 5515 River Oaks Drive in Titusville here. A year ago, we voted for this. We want this. Citizens of the state and the citizens of Titusville want this. I understand there are some issues at the state level, but we can't just keep pushing and waiting for everybody else to do something. We want this and we're pushing for this. This is not a pot center where people go and smoke their marijuana. This is a medical facility. It's like a pharmacy. People go, they will get their medical marijuana, and they will go home and they will use it responsibly. We are for this, and we are hoping that you will drop this moratorium so that we can allow medical marijuana facilities to come here to the city. The state has only allowed 10 of them so far, and I believe only six are being built. That leaves four. Four will not come to Titusville. We're not going to have a bunch of medical marijuana facilities here in town. So I urge the city council to drop the moratorium and see what happens, and let's get these facilities to the city.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
I have one. You say the state allows a maximum of 10, and this might be more for staff. Is it, is it maximum of 10 centers and multiple dispensaries?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
It's, I think that the language is fairly confusing. A medical marijuana treatment center may have a variety of dispensing locations. There are currently, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. There are 13, 13 medical marijuana treatment centers.
Okay.
One of them, Trulieve, has 12 locations throughout the state of Florida. There's another one called Sutera Therapeutics, which has two. Currelief has two. Knox Medical has six. And then there are three where there's dispensing via delivery only.
Is there a maximum allowed dispensaries?
There is.
Okay. Okay.
The legislation limits them, and it's by district. There are seven districts in the state. And once they've met that maximum, then it will wait until there's 100,000 people who have gotten a dispensary card, and then there will be additional allowed.
Okay.
And to date, the last one, the last time I looked, which was November 21st, there were a total of 54,251 patients in the registry.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So I, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So what is the maximum as opposed to 10 at this point?
The maximum, the maximum number of
Units.
Treatment centers. You're talking about the maximum number of dispensaries. I'm going to have to look this, it'll take me a moment to find it. I want to make sure I have it right.
Okay. We'll wait, but we're staring.
All right. I'll go sit down if you have any other questions. I'll gladly come back up.
Okay. The first group of licensees are licensed by August 20, 1st, August 1st, 2017. And the second group of licenses must be permitted by October 3rd, 2017. It says there are 25 dispensing facilities statewide until the Medical Marijuana Use Registry contains 100,000 active qualified patients. When that occurs, an additional five dispensing facilities are authorized for each licensed medical marijuana treatment center. And there are 11 treatment centers. So they will be able to do that.
Fifty-five plus whatever the first number was.
That's correct.
Seventy-something, right? Seventy-something? I don't, I don't remember.
There are now 54,000.
No, no, I mean, how many centers?
Well.
You got 11 times 5, it's 55. What was the first?
If, if you, right. But right now, some of these treatment centers have not chosen to have dispensaries. They're simply selling, I'm sorry, they're simply growing and processing. So some of them have chosen not to have dispensaries. Some of them have chosen have delivery only, and some have chosen to have just the actual production.
I guess my point is it's well over 10 or 11.
Yes, sir. There are currently that are open in the state today. I'm aware of one in Palm Bay and two in the city of Orlando.
Do you have more cards, clerk?
Yes, sir. The next card is Ray Haskell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ray Haskell, 2905 Largespur, Titusville, Florida. I am again asking for you guys to rescind this moratorium. Numbers don't lie. I'm a hard numbers guy. Spent 27 years across the river running hard numbers. We're killing people every day. Every single day, we're killing people. Marijuana's never killed a soul in all of recorded history. Never killed a soul. People are hurting out there. And this is just, I know it's a long process for this to happen. This is just the first step. While the state continues to play their games, numbers will increase, these numbers will change, but let's get out in front of it. Let's not fight it. Let's help these people. All I'm asking. I had a nice conversation with Coach P. He supports us. You can call him if you'd like. I spent about half an hour on the phone with him. Marvelous guy to talk to, and he was very supportive. So I'm hoping that you folks will see it upon yourselves to help us out here, please. Gary Sweeney and two others are dead, and I can't bring them back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Sherry Marshall.
Hi, I'm Sherry Shelly Marshall, 995 North Carpenter Road, resident of Titusville. I really wasn't expecting to be speaking tonight, but when I found out there was not very many people here, I decided to do a little research while I was here. I'm not the hard numbers type person, but I did get some numbers. As a town, we are doing great. We're making huge strides in progress in bringing in new business. On that note, with a dispensary, a non-refundable application fee, $1,000 to $5,000. Every year, licensing regulation fees, anywhere from $5,000 to $20,000. Taxes, the local government of a dispensary gets 10%. Now, California has 39 million people. They did 109 million in taxes just on medical marijuana. Florida has 20 million people. Fifty-nine, or 54 and a half million dollars, we would get 10% of simply for having a dispensary here in town. Hard numbers. We would be serving veterans who are aged, are chronically ill. They wouldn't have to travel to Palm Bay. That's over an hour away, one, one way. Orlando, 45 minutes. A lot of these people don't have transportation to do that. Why not have it here at home? Why not save all this money that could go to other cities and put it in our own town? 51% could go to education. Lord knows we need that here in this town. Lord knows. Colorado has already done over one, or between January 1st and August 31st, has done $1.2 billion worth of sales. That's just eight months. I cannot see Titusville turning their back on that kind of revenue in a situation that helps its citizens. I, that's, that's me. You're providing jobs. You've got horticulture, agricultural, you've got the dispensary, you've got retail, you've got jobs just by having a dispensary here. And again, like you said, you're not going to have the street thugs or whatever at the dispensary. The people that get this medical card have to jump through hoops, many, many, many medical hoops, just to get the card to begin with. Again, I'm thinking $50 million is not something to laugh at. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll answer some of those things. To me, this is not about money at all. To me, it's about a problem with killing people, certainly. Mainly, people are under the influ, ma'am?
No, okay, I just.
You've spoken, I'm talking.
Okay, I thought you were needing me to?
No, ma'am, I'm not asking you any questions. I'm telling you the answers to the questions you asked.
Okay. This is the first time I've ever been to a city meeting, so I didn't know.
I have seen what marijuana can do to people firsthand. The business I was in most of my life were restaurants, and we had a lot of young people there. And to say that marijuana has never killed anybody, I've seen it kill them in two different ways. One is being under the influence of it when they're driving a vehicle. It happens. I'm sorry, it does. So it does kill. The other is people actually and literally, and I've seen one do it, burn out their brains with marijuana. It can be done. The other thing is, I do believe, despite somebody the last time, that it's an entrance level drug to other drugs. Whenever your inhibitions are down from whatever, that's when you get in more trouble in many, many ways. So I'm, I'm totally against this, and there's a lot of people, you know, I think, talking about the vote, I think people were sold a bill of goods by a lawyer over in Orlando who would like this to go so that his multiple firms can make a lot, a lot of money on this deal. And the next thing, if you haven't heard, he's, he's refusing to run for governor, even though nobody's asked him yet. And to me, that sounds like, no, don't ask me, don't ask me. Oh, okay. So he, he is a very ambitious man, a very wealthy man, and he's the one who sold the bill of goods to the 70-something percent who bought it. There is something available. And will you repeat, Mr. City Attorney, about the Charlotte Web and what that is?
There is previous legislation regarding a low THC form of marijuana for certain diseases, illnesses, which is referred to as Charlotte Web. And that's the type of medical marijuana that was available previous to this most recent amendment. Like I said, that was a low THC form that was for specific illnesses, and it had the name Charlotte Web.
As, as far as, the only difference seems to be, from what I've read, that it's in liquid form, that you can't smoke. And I'm not worried about the dispensaries. I'm worried about the growers, because the dispensaries can be certainly regulated to a greater degree. But the growers, they're talking about plants and what they do with them in the middle of the night, I don't know. I do know, just the other day in the paper, there was, I don't know the exact amount, but it was a huge amount of marijuana that was taken in Florida, was confiscated in Florida, and it came from California. Well, California has growers, and they got a lot of stuff, and it's being shipped out. And that's not the first one we've had either. So there is a lot of controversy. I see people this time and last time who make it real simple, we need it, we'll save the kids. The kids can do the oils just as well as anybody. And the smoking part, I think, has very definite downsides. And as far as the money, I can do without the money, and so can City of Titusville if it's, if it's put forth for those things. Ma'am, you spoke once, I cannot let you speak again. I'm sorry. Anyone else that, next card, please.
Regina Fakner.
That's in our ordinances, ma'am.
Oh, that's okay.
Hello, I'm Dr. Regina Fakner, 3868 Southwood Circle, Titusville, Florida. I spoke at the last meeting regarding this. I myself am a chronic pain sufferer. I empathize with everybody here who has pain. I disagree. I am a pediatrician. Marijuana kills. I've seen teenagers die while driving a car under the influence, or kill a mother and her child driving in a car. It is a gateway drug, just as tobacco is a gateway drug, just as alcohol is a gateway drug. Does it do damage? Yes, it does. You're going to have Colorado. There's no price for my family's safety and well-being that is worth any amount of money. I would never take it. I would never take marijuana if somebody offered it to me to help relieve any of my pain. There are other options. I do acupuncture. I've done radio frequency ablation. I've had back surgery. I've been through it all the last seven, eight, nine years, and I'm still here, I'm still up, I'm still moving around, I'm still doing volunteer work. I hurt every night. Marijuana is not a solution. It is a mind-altering drug. You do not think clearly. Alcohol, you can blow in a breathalyzer, you can get a number, there's a legal number, .08, I believe. Okay, you're DUI. There's nothing for marijuana yet. They don't know. They have done studies. We put kids in Louisiana where we moved from, they put kids in driver's ed class, and they make them watch, they make them do a simulator with parent agreement, and then they let them have a few drinks of alcohol. And then they do the simulator again, and it's not good results. There's lots of crashes, there's lots of accidents, there's lots of deaths. Marijuana alters the mind even more so than alcohol. And there's, there's no control, there's nothing on it. There are other options. It is not okay, it's never going to be okay. And how much, how much money do you really need? And is money really that important? Or is it quality of life? There are other options, and I'm standing here as someone who is a medical doctor, 25-plus years, who has chronic pain, who is reaching out to everything. Opioids, opioids became a big problem, okay? In Louisiana, then they opened methadone clinics. Methadone clinics, they lined up around the block. They harassed the doctors. My husband's a doctor. He got jumped in the parking lot because somebody thought he, tried to force him to write a script. Okay, these, these are going to happen. After I left the meeting last time, I went to take my daughter to a chiropractor on Garden Street, and they do massage therapy too, because she was having some back pain, my 22-year-old. I said, they didn't have time for her, so they sent me down the street to another clinic. But I said, can you give me a list of your services and your prices? Did you know that one of their services is for $300, they will write you a prescription for marijuana? And then you can go to a dispensary and get it filled if you can find a dispensary. I brought it home. I showed my husband.
Did you need more time, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Two, three minutes?
Two.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a session? All those in favors, yes? Go ahead, please.
They had it printed out, this is on Garden Street, halfway down Garden Street. We live in Hunter's Ridge. They had it printed out on their list of services, along with massage, chiropractic, this, that, that. They had, and I said, you, because this is chiropractor. I go, she didn't know I was a doctor. I said, you write marijuana? Well, we don't, but we have a doctor who comes in occasionally, and for $300, they'll write you a script for marijuana. This is exactly what happened with Loratab. This is exactly what happened with methadone clinics. And this is exactly, five years from now, if you pass this, you're going to be in the same opioid situation, methadone clinic situation. And like we said, like I said before, in Colorado, crime went up. College dropout went up. Unemployment went up. Divorce went up. It's not a good idea. Please don't. Please don't. I like small-town Titusville. I like this town. I like the community feel. I like the family feel. And like I said, I'm not non-empathetic towards other pain sufferers, because I am one myself. But, you know, I've got heating pads at home, I've got, you know, acupuncture, I go to acupuncture. There's other options. You're never going to be pain-free once you have pain. You've got to learn to adjust your life, modify, and look, and research, and do the latest and greatest. All marijuana is going to do is numb you through life. That's all.
Thank you, doctor. Does anybody have any questions? I see none. Thank you. Next card, please, clerk.
I'm Dr. Ethan Webb.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'm Dr. Ethan Webb. I'm a practicing internal medicine physician. My opinion is that, as my wife had already mentioned, that this is really not a great idea. Previously, we've, we've heard that this is the voice of the people. Well, in Nevada, prostitution is the voice of the people. In Louisiana, the voice of the people was gambling, and it was supposed to go to schools and a whole bunch of other, that's where I'm from, from Louisiana. And so now, instead of in Shreveport, we have a nice riverfront full of five casinos. So these are all choices that we can make. Now, as far as choices that physicians can make, there are a multitude, as I've mentioned before, a multitude of different pharmacologic interventions that are available, that's always been available. The efficacy of medical marijuana is marginal. It, it will work, but so will a whole bunch of other medicines that work equally well. So to pin your hopes for your chronic pain on this one thing, it's, it's truly a fallacy. Now, as far as a decision for this, this city, you know, we spent an hour talking about containers in, in this small city. This is a choice. Just like in Colorado, they made a choice. But Colorado Springs also made a choice. Colorado Springs is a dry county, if you will. They chose that this is not exactly what we want. Now, maybe the Air Force Academy is there, that may make a, a decision, but that was a decision that the city of Colorado Springs made for the state, although the state, the people mandated they wanted it. But this city did not. Now, what happened in Colorado Springs could also happen here, because it's a choice. Now, medical marijuana was legal in Colorado long before it was completely legal. So what I'm saying is the decision that you make right this moment, when marijuana becomes legal completely, which it will, is going to determine what happens next. Is this going to be a Denver? Or is this going to be a Colorado Springs? And this is a choice that we're given right now. And this is a choice that we're given right now. As I'd mentioned before, just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. And this is your decision as the city leaders, just the decision for Colorado Springs. What type of city do you want this to be? And I hope it's a nice, small-town Titusville, because you can go to Palm Bay or in Orlando and get what you need. If you really want it, you can drive the distance. That's all. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the Doctor? Thank you, sir. Next card, please.
Kathy Marinelli.
My name is Kathy Marinelli. I live here in Titusville. I believe that we should not, I'm against extending the moratorium. And I would like to say that people voted, including people in this county, and in this town, in this city, I'm sorry. And people are suffering. And I'm not saying that marijuana is the answer for everyone. But why can't it be included as one of the options? Why is a pill, opioids, how many here have alcohol? Okay? I do. I have wine, I drink. I don't get behind the wheel of a car. That's what laws are for. It's not about the marijuana getting behind the wheel of the car. It's also about alcohol. And there's many more people that get behind, and get into accidents with alcohol than with marijuana. Marijuana, they tend to drive slower. Zoning issues, I don't think it should be any different for a dispensary than it should be for a liquor store or a pharmacy. No different at all. Whatever works for those in those situations, whatever the laws are, those are the zoning laws that we should have. And no, I disagree that marijuana numbs you and it doesn't help. I can state for a fact that it does help some people. It does help, and it's been clinically proven in many trials, that it helps epilepsy, it helps Parkinson's disease, people with MS. There are proven cases where it does help. Pain is one of them. I have personal experience also with pain. Also with mental traumatic brain injuries, are veterans. And not only traumatic brain injuries, but post-traumatic stress disorder, which is hell to live through and to deal with every day. It doesn't go away. Fifty years, it doesn't go away. Why are they not entitled, someone suffering from that? Whether it's from trauma from war, or trauma from sexual abuse, or whatever, child abuse? Why can they not have it? Ultimately, I disagree as well. I think that by having dispensaries and having this as an option...
Do you need more time, ma'am?
Can I have two minutes, please?
Certainly. Make the motion, I have a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Ultimately, thank you. Ultimately, I think that marijuana and having the ability to dispense it could help our opioid crisis. Because people are addicted. You are not addicted to marijuana. I don't care what anyone says. You could have it today and not have it tomorrow. The people that think of it as a gateway drug, you've been brainwashed since the twenties and thirties. It's not a gateway drug anymore than alcohol is. If you're prone for a gateway into something, then, okay. Yeah, there's potheads, I'd rather be around a pothead than a pillhead. So, and I would also like to know, I respect someone's opinion of that crime has gone up in Colorado. I happen to have family that live there, and I disagree. I'd like to know where those figures and where that information came from. Because none of the information I get from my family who live there, I would dispute that. Again, I thank you. I hope you'll, again, be a leader and have courage. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next card, please.
Carol Brown.
Greetings and Merry Christmas. Thank you for hearing me today. My name is Carol Ann Brown. I live at 3824 Weathersfield Circle in Titusville. I've been reading a couple of articles about the, while I've been waiting. The issue in Colorado surrounds the use and legalization of recreational marijuana, of which we are not talking about here today. We're talking about medical marijuana. The crime rates in Colorado, in all the articles I just read in the last half hour, there's no data that shows any crime increase in the state of Colorado because they legalized recreational marijuana. If you can find it, I'll hear it. I don't know, I'm not a marijuana user, I don't like THC. Medical cannabis includes the use of THC to help with pain, but it does get you pretty high, too, I hear. I suggest, why not allow some dispensaries here in Titusville? I'm not sure, my personal opinion about the establishing treatment centers. I don't know that we need one here, but I certainly think a medical marijuana dispensary would behoove us in this city. One especially that would allow the healing low THC variety or the CBD. I have chronic pain, and I don't have to take my opioid anymore because I have relief from CBD oil. It's very expensive, and it would be really nice to be able to have it covered by my insurance. Anyway, we don't need THC, I don't think. Some people like it, it helps, it's a better effect for their pain. But it's also very psychoactive, and it does make you high. I don't care what anybody says. When you're driving, you're high. And I'm sure back in the early centuries, we all sat around here like we are today, discussing legalizing alcohol. We're going to eventually, it's going to happen. We might as well have control over when it happens in our city. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions?
Next card, please.
The last card is Kurt Leedy.
Mr. Leedy.
Sitting there listening to the speakers, I couldn't help but think that some of them, they can say whatever they want, of course. But the issue, don't get confused, the issue is not the debate on marijuana. That's happened. The people of the state of Florida have spoken. The issue is, you have the authority to allow the dispensaries. Now, I did though make a couple notes, because I didn't hear any real expert testimony here. But a bunch of people use the state of Colorado. As you guys know, I'm from the state of Washington, which has more liberal laws than Colorado. In fact, I'll be going up there in about three days. And the last time I was up there and checked, there is no issues. And from what I understand, there's no issues in Colorado. So, what I'm just going to cut to the chase and ask that you do not approve ordinance number 46-2017 extending the marijuana moratorium in Titusville. And from talking with staff, because the city of Titusville does not have an ordinance dealing with marijuana, you need one. That staff can write an ordinance, if you instruct them to, where the moratorium and the ordinance kicks in on the same day. Moratorium's lifted, the ordinance comes into effect that you're going to need, and you could say, like, no later than the end of January or before. It then has to go to planning and zoning again, and back to you. Very simple. So, that's what I'm asking you to do. You guys all know my opinion on this, and the personal opinions I've had at home, and what I've seen, what the effects that this has. So, I ask you to, again, vote no on the ordinance 46-2017, and I instruct staff to write a new ordinance.
Do you need more time, Mr. Leedy?
Just a half a minute. Write a new ordinance, and end the moratorium on the date that new ordinance goes in effect. Say no later than January. So, any questions for me?
No.
Anybody? Okay, thanks.
I will make a statement, though. This is called quasi-judicial for a reason, because we have to, it's not for you, Mr. Leedy, adhere to evidentiary, I'm not even sure I said that right, but evidence, if we were, anybody can speak, but there's only two people in here, if they went into a court of law, law, that would be considered expert, because the doctors. So, you said there's nobody in here that's an expert? They're experts. All right. Any, are there anyone else to speak?
Mayor, I just, I would like to just clarify that you're acting in your legislative capacity when you're writing this ordinance. So, your decision has to be fairly debatable. Can't be arbitrary, but you have a lot of discretion. You will have more discretion on whether or not to enact this than you would per se on your standard quasi-judicial, which would be based on substantial evidence. This is your decision to make as legislators, and what you believe to be in the best interest of your community. So, when you evaluate this, that's the threshold.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, we've got lots of lights. Let's just jump right into it here. Member Nelson.
I just wanted to point out that medical marijuana can only be used for certain illnesses. And they're basically terminal illnesses and PTSD. Those are the only two things, really. They list like five things, but that seems to be the two categories. It's not that you can walk in and say, "My toe hurts, I want marijuana." That being said, I looked at the video that one of the news teams did in Orlando at one of the dispensaries, and I got to tell you, everybody in there was over sixty. It wasn't the kids in there, it was the, well, it's all just...
You're over sixty?
I'm over sixty. It was all us old folks in there. The kids can go out on the streets and get it, and they can probably get it cheaper. But the eighty-year-old grandma can't huddle down to the corner and buy her pot. She's going to go to the dispensary, and she's going to pay more money. But that being said, if she's eighty-years-old, you know, and she's got one of these illnesses, you know, I don't see us denying her that right. We do have a, an agency that is supposed to ride herd on the doctors. I hope that they're doing that. When I was a prosecutor, they weren't always world's greatest at doing that, but I hope they ride herd on them and make sure that they are doing this appropriately. So, I would like to see the moratorium continue, but I would like to see us instruct staff, advise staff to come back the first week of, first meeting of January with an ordinance. And that ordinance would include a sunsetting of this moratorium. I did talk to Ms. Busaka, she said that is a possibility, that she can get that done if we so desire.
Ma'am, due to advertising requirements, it'll probably be, the best we could do would be the second meeting in January.
Okay. Bye.
Member Stokel.
Thank you. Yeah, just from talking to staff, I think that they, the direction I received from them is they would like probably a little bit more time. So, extending the moratorium, I'm in favor of. They do want direction as to whether or not we do want to draft an ordinance or ban it. This is something that's actually kept me up a lot, probably one of the most things that I've researched. Just talking to several citizens, listening to the ones that show up, talking to medical professionals, talking to other elected officials. And I'm, right now, with what we have, what direction we have in the state, I'm leaning more towards banning it. And I'll tell you a few reasons why. We hear a lot about seventy-one percent want it. They voted for it, they want it. And I think when they went in there to vote, they were voting for the right to have access to it. So, I think that we need to keep that in mind. It wasn't, yes, I want it right in my backyard, where pharmacies are allowed, but I want to have access to it. So, hearing a lot of people saying tonight, you know, "I need it, people are dying, it helps me, if that's your drug, if that's your drug of choice, I want to be able to have it." So, I did some more investigating, and I actually called one of the dispensaries to find out what would it take if I wanted to get it. And you do, it's not a script, you actually get a recommendation. They cannot write you a script for it. It's a recommendation by a doctor. You can have it filled at the dispensary. You don't even have to go to the dispensary at all. The one I called is actually in Edgewater. I asked them, "Do you guys service Brevard County?" They said yes. And it's a flat delivery rate of $25. It's not more expensive to deliver in Brevard versus right there in Edgewater. It's just one flat rate. So, that made me feel a lot better. Hearing a lot of the testimonies at our last meeting of people upset, you can get it, you have access to it right now. $25 delivery fee, right there in Edgewater, they will bring it to you. So, I do want to make that clear, that we're not denying anybody the access to it if they need it. I still have other concerns, because to me, this is a zoning issue. What the state gave us right now, it's everywhere a pharmacy is, or nothing at all. And with that, I'm leaning with nothing at all. We still have our police chief that's against it, he's not wanting it. It's still cash-only, there's just so many uncertainties right now, that I don't feel comfortable this is the right thing for our city at this time. If the state comes back with different things, if we start seeing the effects of Edgewater, of Palm Bay, and saying, "Okay, you know what, this is actually really good, let's revisit it," I'd feel a lot more comfortable going that direction. But at this time, I don't, I don't think it's in our best interest as a city to say, "Yep, this is great, let's go ahead and have it," and then potentially come back and saying, "You know what, let's revisit." Now, we have lawfully non-conforming dispensaries. But my biggest thing I wanted to say was that people that actually need it have access to it right now. Also, my last thing, I do kind of tend to also lean towards, I want to say the county, I think their moratorium expires the end of the state legislative session. And from who I've talked to there, I think they may be leaning towards allowing it. So, in that instance, some of our citizens in Titusville, even if we do ban it, they may still potentially have access to it, and the county property, potentially. So, those are my thoughts of where I'm leaning to.
Thank you. Member Diesel.
Yeah, I can't interpret what their seventy-one percent were thinking when they voted. So, I'm going to stand with the fact that seventy-one percent voted to support this. We don't use the term "medical" enough when we discuss it. We talk about marijuana, 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 we talk about Colorado. It's medical. It's medical. I obviously have voted for the moratorium at least once, if not twice, and we've had a moratorium for a year. So, I feel very comfortable that we haven't rushed into anything. We have thought this over. We have thought this over, and the state ha, and my big deal, as you guys have heard previously, and, and, uh, Member Stokel just noted, the state has put us in a corner and said, you're not gonna get to decide, we decided. But they're not gonna change. So I really feel what's on our plate right now is a seventy-one percent vote, and the state saying that we're gonna tell you where they're gonna go. Because, believe me, I'd like to have more say on where they go. I'm not pleased with how we are being told that they're gonna be treated like pharmacies. However, I feel like in the end, we're not really voting on, are we going to legalize this? Are we voting for marijuana or against marijuana, as someone already stated? That vote took place. And that vote took place, and seventy-one percent, seven out of ten people, said, we want access to this. And I feel like we are, all I'm voting for here right now is to say that seventy-one percent, I'm gonna support those seventy-one percent. I'm going to say, we have moratorium this, we have thought about this, and I'm ready to move forward, and I feel like we have thought about it long enough, and it's gonna happen. State's not gonna change. We know the state, the state's not gonna change, they're gonna tell us where we're gonna put them, or where we, where we, we can't tell them where they're gonna go. And I feel like that we need to, we need to recognize the, the vote of medical marijuana.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so, Member Stokel, I appreciate the, both the research and a well-thought-out position on that, that was helpful. You know, as, as far as what good, you know, what good are we waiting for to see from other places? I think we're gonna see what we want to see. So if morally there is a concern, I think we're gonna see a moral concern. I think that if there is, as a community that we would define or what we would want to be, I think that there is a contingent of residents in Titusville that, you know, def, definitively would like to keep Titusville secluded from other things that you may find in central Orlando, or you may find down south in larger communities. And I get that, that is a contingent or a portion of our community, for sure. So I, I recognize and I validate that. I also believe that access through delivery only is almost like shopping online. It exists, but only ten percent of the market does it. So I think that there's something to be said, when we talk about access. I equate it to, if I need help finding something or doing something from an agency, and the first words I get are, just go look on the website, you'll find it. And buried on page twelve, under tab C, is the answer that I'm looking for. Sometimes, when something is difficult in access, for whatever the case may be, it's right there, but it's just hard to get hold of it. I think that the consequence of that is that there is an inadvertent non-use of whatever tool may be there, whatever access or information may be. I think that that is the case with dispensaries. I think that if there is one in our community, or there are some in our community, and courtesy of the state, it is what it is, I think that the, the access, and true access to it, is something that would be allowed. I think that to relegate it to a delivery service only from another community, and so forth and so on, I just think that there's people who aren't gonna find it, or it will be so cumbersome to do that. And I know it's as easy for, like myself, I could Google it, look it up, and hit call, and that would be something. But I gotta be honest, until you just said that, didn't even think about it. Didn't even think about it. And I'm not saying that this is for me, but I am saying that I fit a whole lot of criteria. I do. So I, I go to the VA, I, you know, I, they, boy, they'll stroke you a, a prescription for pills, bottles at a time, unending. Right? And I still, and I, I just say personally, and people that I know, I have noted, I am not going to move forward, and if this is accessible, use that as a treatment. I still have some hangups on it. But I also understand that as a community, sold a bill of goods, uh, whatever, I, I get that. On the other hand, it's the responsibility of voter to be educated on what they, they choose to vote on. And I believe that. So as far as, I, I think Member Levy hit the nail on the head with this, or with this suggestion. I, I, I would definitely say, we're, we're past the point of moratorium. Uh, I believe at this point, it's up or down. So I think we're past moratorium, go up or down. And if it's up or down at this point, I will go up for allowing it. For, number one, it's a constitutional right. Number two, the state of Florida is now regulating it through the Department of Medical Marijuana. So I don't know what else that we can add as a community, or what leverage we have to, to define scope of it. I'm sure that as we move forward, that we might be able to have an opportunity for that, either through the legislative process. But at this time, it's either up or down. And it's a constitutional argument, and I go, people voted for it, so I, I would vote yes for it. Although I think that as written, it was poor. So that's where I'm at. And with the, piggyback with the idea of we sunset the moratorium, but then also, critical to that is a no-later-by date. Whereas we don't, so I, I, I am also in agreement somewhere around January, probably by the end of January, we should have that hashed out as an ordinance.
I've already given my opinion, you, you've heard me. I can't vote for this, there's, there's no way. Would I want to see that, this in Titusville? I look at my grandkids, and I hope they're never exposed to it. But now I'll put my mayor's hat on, it's not up or down. We, we're gonna have to do a, a short-term moratorium so that staff had something to put in place. So nobody, nothing happens funny. So in either case, we need a, a moratorium of, of whatever degree, staff needs to come up with a, an ordinance. Is that correct? So it's, it's not an up or down thing tonight. I mean, I'm telling you that honestly, that, that's not the way it works. Okay. Wants to make a motion?
You want to, you want me to? Okay. I would move to extend ordinance number forty-six dash two, twenty-seventeen, extending the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries. I would also add that council would direct the staff to fashion an ordinance and bring it back to us either the first or second meeting in January.
Yes, ma'am, you have two options on your ordinance. You have an option to, actually, you have three. You have an option to ban medical marijuana. You have an option to treat medical marijuana dispensaries as pharmacies. And you have the option to redo pharmacy regulations.
That would be option two. Shall we ask Mr. Larisse to repeat that?
Yes, please. I didn't, I don't think I remember what he said.
The question is, does he remember?
Yes, ma'am, the, the state statute states that you have three options available to you. You have the option to ban medical marijuana. You have the option to treat medical, medical marijuana dispensaries the same as you do your pharmacies. And you have the option to redo your pharmacy regulations.
So Ms. Busaka, it would be option two, and we can ask if Mr. Larisse has TGA.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I believe.
And I, I may have misspoke. I think we can get a first reading to the first meeting by advertising, but we have a few other items on that first agenda that will be very time-consuming.
Secretary of Motion, ma'am?
Staff will work as quickly as we can on whatever direction the board has.
And, you know, we would like to have it the first, first meeting, but if, if we can't, we can't.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Under discussion, I'd just like to make one more comment. I, I think we'd be a leader if we did not do this. From what I've seen of the research that was done by staff, there's still a lot of people that, or jurisdictions that are waiting to see what the, what the state has to say. So I don't think we'd be a follower, I think we'd be a leader.
Are we voting on both of these at the same time together?
Yeah, I, I think it would probably be better for you, sir, to address the moratorium first. And then, once you have done that action, to provide advisability to staff as to what ordinance from those three choices you would like for us to come back to you.
Okay.
You don't have to make a decision tonight if you don't want to. We can come back to you the first meeting in January and request advisability. And you can have further discussion on that if you wish, or you can direct us to begin work now.
It's your motion, so you have to reconstruct it.
I would ask that we go ahead and begin work now.
Get what?
Begin work now. As far as the advisability.
I think what we're, we're needing to do is address the ordinance, the ordinance itself for the moratorium first, that's what the, the agenda item is.
Okay, can we do this? I would move to approve ordinance number forty-six dash twenty-seventeen, extending the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries.
Second.
Any discussion? And, well, let me just, any specific amount of time?
No.
Okay.
Well, I think it's six months.
As drafted.
It, yeah, the ordinance is six months.
Okay. Discussion, sir?
Yeah, and thank you for that. Although I see that it's drafted at six months, I, I would make the amendment for, until January thirty-first.
Sorry, I'm, I'm shaking my head, it's very rude, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
But in the event that we do not get a quorum for P and Z, which unfortunately is a regular occurrence,
Right.
we would have to re-advertise the second hearing. So I'm just asking that, I promise you, we will do this as quickly as possible. But sometimes, we don't get quorums at P and Z, and I would not like to be in a situation where you don't have the chance to vote before that other moratorium. So if you would give us, if, if you would give us a minimum of ninety days with the promise that we will do this as quickly as possible.
And perhaps you can amend to say, once the ordinance is for you, you sunset the moratorium.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That was it.
Will you show your amendment, although you haven't made it yet, I guess?
I, I respectfully, I, I get the process. It's a constitutional amendment at this point. And where I know that as a city, this works, I, so if, if there's consensus and there's comfortable with that, I'm, I'm comfortable. I'll move forward with it and withdraw that. But I, if, if a quorum is holding us up on figuring out what we're gonna do with a constitutional amendment, that's a, that's a bigger issue. And so I, I would hope that we could address that, although I understand that staff will work as diligently as possible on this. So, I would, I would defer to the, the recommendation, but.
That can work.
So now we're back to the original motion? And do we have a second on that? We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Can, can you restate the, the motion?
The motion was to extend, or approve ordinance number forty-six dash twenty-seventeen, extending the moratorium on the medical marijuana dispensaries.
Was that what the recommendations of?
Yes, but Mr. Larisse is asking that I make him separately.
Okay, all right, then, yes. Yes?
So are we approving the ordinance as recommended? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Okay, Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Second part?
Okay, second part is that we move to advise staff to move forward on drafting an ordinance, allowing medical marijuana dispensaries, and sunsetting the moratorium.
When that's written? When that's completed?
Correct. Well, they do it within the ordinance. It will actually be done as part of the ordinance.
It's still gonna be completed to do. Any discussion? Clerk, roll call vote, please.
You haven't had, got a second, sir?
I'm sorry.
Second with discussion.
Go ahead.
Is that not to exceed ninety days?
I didn't put in there ninety, I'm sorry, I didn't put in there ninety days. I did discuss with staff today, if we were to do this, how long would it take? They believe that they could have the first reading to us, first of January, first meeting in January. The second reading would be second meeting in January.
I, I feel comfortable with that timeline. I think it's credibility to the public. I think that, I, I think that putting an end cap that is shorter than six months, I think that, thank you, for, for maintaining credibility in the process, or I think good faith from a public standpoint. Because whereas we may move forward with this much quicker, and I understand that, if I am in the public, the only thing that I heard tonight was the city of Titusville extended the moratorium for six more months. That's the takeaway. Even though we've talked about stuff, at the end of the day, legislatively or within direction that we've given, we could sit this for five months and twenty-nine days, even though staff has good intent. And I just think from the, from the faith, I think from the public, I have tremendous faith in staff, not, not all the public is as excited about city government. So that, that is, I, I would ask for a ninety-day amendment on that.
So basically, you're saying that we advise staff to bring forward an ordinance within ninety days?
Correct.
July?
The second, hold. Hold on to the second, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Go ahead, ma'am. Member Diesel?
I was just gonna say, and the moratorium sunsets when the ordinance is complete. Thank you.
All right, clerk? Roll call vote?
Member Stokel?
No.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
No.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Passes three to two. Next item. Mr. City Attorney, will you read the ordinance, please? Number D?
Next item is ordinance number forty-seven, two thousand seventeen, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighteen, regarding swimming pools. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter six of Buildings and Building Regulations, specifically amending Section six fifty-six, required inspection, approval prior to use or occupancy, six fifty-eight qualification for obtaining permits, and six sixty-eight inspections in building site to add requirements related to swimming pools. Deleting Chapter eighteen swimming pools in its entirety as duplicative to requirements of the Florida Building Code and Land Development Regulations, providing for severability, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for incorporation into the code, and providing for an effective date.
This is the second reading and public hearing. Code of Ordinances, Chapter eighteen, swimming pools, was created in nineteen sixty-three and subsequently amended in nineteen ninety to prohibit construction of a swimming pool by an owner-builder. After review of the code, staff is recommending the chapter be deleted because the technical zoning and permitting requirements found in this chapter are administered more appropriately in both the Florida Building Code and the Titusville Land Development Regulations. In addition, much of the language in this chapter is no longer consistent with current adopted codes, department policies, and fee schedules. In an effort to bring consistency to the city operation, staff believes this chapter is antiquated and should be deleted in its entirety.
Okay. City staff, do you have a presentation? Any questions from, open the public hearing, any, the council, have any questions of staff? I don't see any. Clerk, are there any cards?
No, sir.
Okay, closed the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'd move to amend, ah, move to amend.
Can't amend it yet. I know, so am I.
I'd move to approve ordinance number forty-seven dash twenty-seventeen. That's it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further than. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously.
We need a roll call.
Oh, sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Next item, Mr. City Attorney. You will read it by title.
Ordinance number forty-nine, two thousand seventeen, relating to conservation subdivisions in the area of critical concern. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances related to utilizing conservation subdivisions in the area of critical concern by amending Chapter thirty Development Standards, Section thirty-two-oh-seven, area of critical concern performance, to permit the development of conservation subdivisions, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date and incorporation into the code.
This is the second reading and public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action four-zero. The area of critical concern was designated as a special zoning overlay district in September nineteen eighty-eight in order to require development that is consistent with the protection of the city's well field and aqua recharge areas. Development standards within the area of critical concern are required to comply with several requirements, including a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. Intent of this limitation is to maximize recharge and permit reasonable use of the land. The Water Resources...the Water Resources Department supports residential development utilizing the conservative subdivision standards as a way of to minimize the alteration of topography, maximize recharge, and provide additional development options. The minimum percentage of open space required for the conservation subdivision is fifty percent of the gross acreage of the development.
Staff, do you have any comments? Counsel, any questions of staff? I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, any cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Counsel?
I would move to approve ordinance number forty-nine dash twenty-seventeen relating to the conservation subdivisions in areas of critical concern.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, City Attorney. If you will read it.
The next item is a comprehensive plan amendment that does not have a corresponding ordinance.
Right. Okay. City Manager?
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action...correction. Let me come back up here. The Community Development Agency unanimously recommended approval of this item at their November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the transmittal four-zero. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment twenty-seven...two zero one seven dash two proposes to amend policy one point...two one point one of the future land use element by changing the maximum residential density from twenty dwelling units per acre to thirty dwelling units per acre within the downtown sub-district of the downtown mixed-use...land use designation. The proposed CPA is consistent with the description of the downtown sub-district as consisting of higher-density mixed-use buildings. The policy will also implement Recommended Land Development Regulation Amendment of the City of Titusville's Economic Strategic Plan, which the city council adopted on twenty-four January two thousand seventeen.
Let me just...okay. This is a transmittal, so...staff, have any thing on this? Okay. Let me go back here. There's no card. Are there cards on this, clerk?
Yes, sir. We have one card. It's Woody Rice.
Mr. Rice, sir.
Woody Rice, five oh five Dean River Avenue. And this is just another step in improving how we deal with our downtown, and it's actually very critical to the Walker Hotel renovation, and we really appreciate your support on this ordinance change. Thank you.
Any other cards, clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. I will both open and close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? I see none. We'll accept the motion.
I move to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment two thousand seventeen oh-two, proposes to...well, to amend policy one twenty-one point one.
This is not...a roll call vote.
Correct. This is the transmittal hearing.
Right. Just one more. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Like sign. Passes unanimously. Okay. Next item is item G.
This is a public hearing for easement vacation number two dash two zero seventeen and resolution number twenty-one dash two thousand seventeen. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action four-zero. A petition, easement vacation number two dash two zero one seven, has been received from Roy Floss to vacate a portion of the public utility easement. The easement is located on the east side of the single-family lot located at forty-three Linwood Avenue. The easement vacation has been requested because the owner is proposing to install a shed that will encroach approximately ten feet into the fifteen-foot public utility easement. The applicant is requesting only the portion of the easement that will be encroached upon by the shed to be vacated. The total area of the vacation requested is approximately nine hundred and fifty square feet. There have been no objections received regarding this request.
Okay. I closed the public hearing. Wait, did we open the public hearing? No, we didn't. Open the public hearing. Staff, do you have any comments on this? Clerk, any cards on this besides Woody's?
The applicant, Mr. Floss, is here. Just if you have questions.
Okay. Anyone have questions? I don't see any. Close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? I see none. Anyone like to make a motion, please?
Move to approve easement vacation number two dash two oh one seven and resolution number two one dash two oh one seven.
Second.
A motion and a second. This is a roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Next item is item eight.
The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action four-zero. A petition to easement vacation number three dash two zero one seven has been received from Derek Cave to vacate two public utility easements. The first easement is a twenty-five-foot public utility easement along the northern property line, and the second easement is a ten-foot public utility easement along the eastern property line. The easements were formerly rights-of-way that were vacated by resolution number one dash two zero one three and two dash two zero one three. However, the resolutions placed full width easements where the rights-of-way were located. The applicant is now requesting to vacate these easements in order to facilitate the development of the subject partial. Necessary easements will be secured through the site-plan-development process. There are no objections to this request.
Staff, any comments?
Just wanted to mention that this will facilitate the development of the property known as the wedge.
Say that again.
The wedge property. This has long been in discussion. This will facilitate the development of that property.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Clerk, are there any cards?
No, sir.
Close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion? I see no numbers up there. Anyone like to make a motion?
I can make a motion, but can I ask a question also?
Certainly, yes.
So what's going in the wedge?
We have been advised that they are going to be putting in Cumberland Farms.
Okay.
And two other stores in a small shopping area.
Okay. So the wedge is gone.
Oh, not yet.
Not yet. Move to approve easement vacation number three dash twenty-seventeen.
And resolution?
Oh, and resolution...excuse me. Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-seventeen.
And?
And resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-seventeen.
Even you can make a mistake.
Need to put my eyes on.
That's all right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Yeah, go ahead.
I think you won that one. Member Stokel?
That's my vote.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Next item is...
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this action four-zero. A petition, easement vacation number four dash two zero one seven, has been received from John M. Gandhi III to vacate a portion of one public utility easement and a portion of one drainage easement. The first easement is a six-foot public easement along the northern property line. The second easement is a seven-point-five-foot public utility easement along the western property line. The easements were established as part of the Garden Heights Platt book sixteen, page one zero six, of the Bivard clerk of court records dated five July nineteen sixty-two. The applicant is now requesting to vacate portions of these easements in order to accommodate the construction of a swimming pool in their rear backyard. There have been no objections received regarding the request of this vacation.
Okay. Any cards on this? I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
No, sir.
Does staff have any comments? I didn't ask that. Close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion. Anyone like to make a motion?
I would move to approve easement vacation number four dash twenty-seventeen and resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-seventeen. Did I leave anything out?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This is a roll call.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Okay. Next is item ten A. Mr. City...no, Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance number one, two thousand eighteen, which is historic property ad valorem tax exemption ordinance. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances to establish historic property ad valorem tax exemption by creating Chapter nineteen taxation, Article seven, historic property ad valorem tax exemption, Sections nineteen dash two hundred through nineteen dash two twelve, setting forth the provisions related to the tax exemption program, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This is the first reading. Second reading and public hearing is scheduled at the regular city council meeting on nine January two thousand eighteen, and Ms. Bisaka is here to answer any questions you may have.
I just want to say that when this was brought forward originally to council, there was some concern about having a maximum amount set. The Historic Preservation Board reviewed that idea, and they are recommending that the property value be fixed at one hundred thousand dollars of the improvement value, and the non-residential property improvement value be set at five hundred thousand dollars. And then the council has, of course, the right at all times to reduce the amount. But I'll give you an example. The request for residential ad valorem tax exemption this current fiscal year would be fixed at a maximum amount of seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-five cents per year. And thus, we would expect requests for non-residential and ad valorem extensions could be fixed at a maximum amount of three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars per year. So we find that...we believe that this will be a relatively small impact to the ad valorem taxes and still encourage the preservation of these structures.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, any questions for staff? Clerk, are there any cards?
No, sir.
This is a first reading, so there is no vote. We're on to old business. There is none. New business. Petitions and requests from the public present. Would anybody like to speak? I see no one who wants to speak. Mayor and council reports. You have my report written. City manager's report.
I have one.
I'm sorry. Did you have some?
Yes.
I missed you. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It's okay. I don't know if you guys were aware. At the county commission meeting, Hannah's Heroes with Liz McCarion, they adopted a resolution, and I've spoken with Liz McCarion about Titusville doing the same to show support. And I wanted to see if you guys were interested in having the staff draft a resolution to similar effect of what they passed at the county.
And explain...not exactly, but again, what they passed at the county?
So their resolution...I can show you this if you want. Basically, just talking about suicide rates, the ages that they affect, and then at the very end, just wants to recognize Hannah's Heroes for their dedication, educating the public in the prevention of teen suicide. So I would definitely be interested in helping and supporting a resolution for them.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Thank you, you guys.
Yes, we need a vote on that, right?
We'll bring back the resolution at your next meeting.
Okay. I thought that was it on there, but...okay. Head mayor's report, city manager.
I have one.
Where are these coming from? You. You always wait until...
So, two things for councils, both awareness or concerns. One, the Constitutional Revision Committee met today in their Tax and Finance Committee for discussion on unfunded mandates. And in short, the proposal goes something like, if the state legislature proposes an unfunded mandate, this constitutional amendment would require that three-quarters of the House and three-quarters of the Senate would have to approve this. The rationale, this is a good thing for cities, right? So the state can't just get a majority and then pass an unfunded mandate and say, "Steady, deal with it." This would be good. Follow-up, I'll try to follow up and find out where that went. But I think that that's one to definitely watch as a council, because it could impact us strongly down the road. There are a couple other constitutional revision proposals also worth a watch as well. One is on the right...in short, it has to do with environmental rights, and as an individual, you have a right to clean air, clean that, clean that, which is good intent, as it reads, but the scope of how to apply that and who has to fund that is a different story. So as an example, if we have the right to clean air, does that mean that we, as a city, have to pay for making clean air happen, right? So this is a challenge. The third, and this would be worth watching as well, was a right to a career or a right to a scope or work, whatever that may be. So in short, it just means that everybody has the right to a profession. Well, if you have the right to a profession as deemed by somebody, then that profession could include a lot of different things. And so if it becomes a constitutional right for somebody to be a dancer, let's say, the scope of their dancing, a city would not have the ability to determine, right? So this is something that...this could really impact home rule. When you talk about an individual has a right to be whatever they want, well, they may be able to have that, but it may not be wanted in some cities. So I just share with you that those are three that are chomping around right now that are worth watching. I brought this up to the League of Cities, and it was definitely something that I think that the League will be on the watch for. So thank you. And additionally, thank you for that one. The second was that in the past few months, I've taken a look at the interlocal agreement between the Bivard County School District, the city of Titusville, as well as Bivard County. And one component of that, it definitely outlines what all parties of that agreement are to do. In conjunction with that, we, as a body, definitely have an opportunity to discuss concerns or concerns from a positive nature, like the increase of growth within our community. Whereas we transmit numbers and we transmit data, and that is in conjunction with the school district, I would very much welcome a workshop with the district to discuss what their future plans are for anticip- their future plans are for anticipated growth, and what that's going to look like, not just in their capital outlay program, but how's that going to be inclusive of the neighborhoods that they will be serving, and with what schools they will be serving them with? And the rationale for that is I know that down south, they just went through some concerns about trying to cure the ills of overpopulation in certain skills and redistricting, and then a mob from Vieira came out and said, we're not going to move our kids, and we're not going to send them south, right? In conjunction, the funding from North Brevard from our district got pulled from a, basically a South, Central, and North, to the money from North got pulled to just a half, right? So my faith that although the school district, I believe, is going to try to do the best they can for the entire county, the nuances of North Brevard specifically in the goals of what our community would want, both in where kids can go to school, what schools, what's the plan for how we're going to deal with the increase in population, I think it's warranted at least a workshop to have a one-on-one as a body with them to maybe feel through this, and it's part of our contract. So as a partner, as a person within that agreement, we can ask as a body, and it says that you'll go have a workshop together. So I was wondering if you all had any desire to do that.
It's kind of a school board thing, though, is it?
Except that we're part of that agreement. So there's a rationale, and the rationale for that is there's input or concerns, as I read it, the things that you can discuss when there, those concerns are definitely a part of how a school will impact a community is a focal point, I think is, is worth, and it's valid. I use, I use Riverview as an example, I use over on South Street, the whole building over there, and how are those serving our community, and how, if we're concerned about development to the south of our community, how is that going to work out? And so those are just things that I have. I think it's economic development issues.
Wouldn't it be more effective if you did it at one of their meetings and maybe brought representatives from the Space Coast League of Cities?
I, I think that it would be, except there's two concerns. One is that their meetings are the exact same time our meetings are, and I wouldn't, the school board meetings are the time, the same, they meet right now, so getting to one of their meetings as, as a member of council is almost impossible. And as far as just sending it as a representative, I don't necessarily, I think that the League of Cities would do a great job in saying, you have a responsibility to, with your municipalities, to look at this agreement. I don't feel as confident that they would be able to say that these are the needs of Titusville, and these are the concerns as a community we may have, and my hope would be to prevent possibly some of the decision-making we've seen in the past. I have more faith now, but in the past, I don't. So that's the rationale, and my hope would be to get ahead of it as we grow.
And their meetings are always at the same time?
They just, they parallel.
I don't know. I feel like we're getting into, into something that isn't really our domain. What's council feel?
Well, I've got some questions for the school board. Because as I understand it, the vocational programs that they're doing down south are more tech kind of programs. They have a drone program, they have an aviation program, and we got carpentry. And so I sort of feel like the redhead headed stepchild up here, and I know that Misty Belford, I talked to her, and she said, we are trying to change that, but maybe we need to say it loud and clear. You know, you can't ignore us. You can't give us, our kids the carpentry class and give Palm Bay and Melbourne the tech classes. I know that they don't seem to be really up on the vocational classes, and that was something that we talked about yesterday. I went to a medium, meeting, that's basically the consortium of aerospace companies, and they are really looking for tech workers, and we don't have those programs. And Eastern Florida State University was there, and they're talking about starting some programs in August to try to supply these people, these companies with workers. But it just, it just irritated me to no end to feel like the redhead stepchild and to get a carpentry class. So maybe it'll help, I don't know.
I don't know either. That's still your number up there, are you through, is that an old?
I just have one additional comment for scope, sir, so thank you. So this is under section two, listed joint agreements, or joint meetings, and then at subsection two point one, meetings of elected officials. One or more elected representatives of all county, each city and the school board may meet, if requested by any of the parties to this agreement, in a joint workshop. A representative of the regional planning council will also be invited to attend. The joint workshop sessions will provide the opportunity for the county, the cities, and the school board to discuss the school board's five-year district facilities work program, hear reports, discuss policies, set direction, and reach understandings. It further goes on to talk about mutual concern regarding coordination of land used school facilities, but also including population, student growth, development trends, school needs, and off-site improvements. And those are the...
Who are the attendees necessary?
It says one, one or more elected, one or more elected representatives of the county, each city, and the school board may meet.
So you have to get a representative from each city?
No, sir.
Read it again, because I'm not understanding.
To, to the agreement that we signed, well, I don't know, sir. That would be a great one for... Yeah, I don't want to overstate it, but it's a great question.
I do not have the agreement in front of me, obviously, I can certainly look at that. I'd be glad to forward that to each of you as well.
I would love to, yeah, absolutely, sir, absolutely.
Will you look at that for us and bring it back?
I can look at, I can also provide electronic copy for each of you after this meeting, so you can each read it as well, and we can come back and...
Not tonight, though, please.
That's all right?
Not tonight, please.
In the morning.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem. Okay. Where are we here? Still on the city managers.
I think council, council all complete now?
Yeah, wake up.
Okay, I have one action item and a couple information items for council. The action item is the Greater Titusville Renaissance, GTR's requesting city sponsorship for Playland Festival of the Arts. In your packet is an email request for fundraising received from the executive director of GTR, and we request council's direction regarding city sponsorship of this festival.
Okay.
I think we have one card for this item.
Yes, will you call the card, please, clerk?
It's Ms. Musselman, and also Michael Foster, they filled out the same card.
That's Nikki.
I guess I, I've never done it before, it's always just been me. So my name is Kathy Musselman, I'm executive director of the Greater Titusville Renaissance, and...
My name is Dr. Michael Foster. Thank you all for your time today. As we all probably know, arts and entertainment events are, provide lots of benefits for a community. They not only provide an opportunity for people to get together, have common experiences and develop relationships, but they also become a nice driver economically for a community. As foot traffic comes into an event, it naturally increases retail. That has been our hope, or was our hope, for the former Art and Algorithm Festival, but it didn't quite perform to the levels that we were hoping. So at the recommendation of lots of, lots of people, including some of you all, lots of local residents, we've rebranded the festival to the Playland Festival of the Arts. We did that for several different reasons. One, to highlight the unique environment that we have here in North Brevard, but also to really highlight the many talented people that call this home. This festival, which will be on February second through the fourth, will feature lots of different exciting elements. First, we have the art show sponsored by the North Brevard Art League, formerly the Titusville Art League, which will have over two hundred sculptors and painters there present. We also have three days of live performances, including our friends over the Titusville Playhouse, at the art studio, Dusich Dance, we even have some people coming over from Cirque du Soleil. Additionally, we have a film festival that should be housed at the Epic Theater, hopefully, if it's completed by then, and that will feature Florida production companies specific to, to our region, from Orlando, from Melbourne, from a little bit north of here as well. We'll also have some interactive exhibits for kids and families, as well as a community project that we all get to work on. It's our hope that we will highlight the many great things that we have going on in here in our community, including the artists, including the environment.
I'd also, I'd like to add that we, you heard earlier Mr. Beavers speak about Space Coast Fab Lab and their participation in the Playland Festival of the Arts coming up in February. They will have a major exhibit there, as well as the North Brevard Art League. So our big thing here was to collaborate with other organizations within our community and truly create a community event. So we've got the technology and the art that we used in Arts and Algorithm, incorporate them into this festival, and now we've created this multifaceted arts festival, which we hope to grow. So in February, we will have digital arts, film fest, music, dance...
Drama.
Drama. And, and as Michael, Dr. Foster stated, that we are planning on a community art project. So we're going to be having workshops every Saturday in January at Hobby Lobby, where families and childrens can come and create certain art that is going to be exhibited at Titus Landing, and it will be a huge art project that the community is going to participate in. Our hope also is to grow this festival. So in speaking with Mr. Beavers, the Space Coast Fab Lab is doing their Makerspace Fest in late February in Palm Bay, but next year they want to do it in Titusville, and we're looking to incorporate the Makerspace event along with the Playland Festival of the Arts. And to also grow to include other forms of art, which can be culinary art and fashion, and, and expand on something that we touched base with this year was creating music through technology. So that's a big thing there, too, and I, I just have one more thing.
You can have us...
Thank you.
Two minutes, what, what do you think?
I wanted to add, too, that we did receive...
You have to give a certain amount of time, two minutes, three minutes?
Two minutes, yeah, that's good.
Have a motion, have a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
You got it.
Thank you. I wanted to also state that we did receive grant funding through Brevard County, through the Tourism Development Office, so through the Brevard Cultural Alliance. So that came to a tune of about nine thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The TDO grant of five thousand will be spent on outside of Brevard County marketing. We have secured a story in Space Coast Living Magazine in their January issue about the festival, and we're also doing billboards, radio, and Florida Today and social media. Our expenses on the festival is a lot less than it has been the last four years, and we're incorporating our community and collaborating with many organizations, and so we asked the city to sponsor ten thousand dollars for the event, and you can sponsor the North Brevard Art League and Space Coast Fab Lab exhibits.
Okay, any other comments? Any questions from council? Okay, if you will sit, and we're going to discuss it. I asked that this be put back on for discussion, and, because I think they're doing something that's, A, out of the ordinary, I guess, but it's, it's being put together to kind of take up the slack where the Indian River Festival left off. I can't in good conscience go ten thousand. I, I would say a maximum of five, if we're going to do it. Now, I'm, I'm putting this out there, but I also understand we're on a very slippery slope, because we did cut back everyone else, and this would be the only one this year that, that would get this sort of a grant, and no doubt others will come back to us again, and I gotta put and say, why did you do that? So I have to put that out there, so. It's a tough decision for me, it's probably going to be a tough decision for, for you also, so I'll open it up to you then. Anybody have any comments to... Yes. The city attorney, is that you?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
I just wanted to remind council, you, there's a resolution number thirty-six, twenty fifteen, that states that when evaluating a request for public funds, the city council shall apply the following guidelines to determine whether or not the intended activity and use of funds constitutes valid public purpose. First, evaluate whether the activity for which funds are requested shall be open and accessible to the general public, a clearly identified public benefit or service to the public as the primary objective, separate and apart from any incidental private benefit that may be served, a reasonable expectation that the identified public purpose will be substantially and effectively accomplished, that the event promotes the health, safety, and welfare of the public, public funds may be used toward the achievement of economic development goals, such as the attraction, retention, and growth of business enterprises within the city, and a reasonable expectation that the public purpose will be accomplished, and there's an ability to implement safeguards to assure that the funds requested are used for the public purpose. Those are, if that helps, those are the guidelines that council has created to evaluate requests for public funds. And of course, you always have to have the funds budgeted, so you'd have to identify source of funds.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we cut everybody to the bone, and given that, it would be hard to, I would be hard pressed to say more than a thousand dollars, because we did cut everybody to the bone. We cut them down to a thousand, two thousand dollars, so it'd be hard to, for me to turn around and say, give these people more, because we gave these people less. But in listening to Richard, Mr. Broome, talk about the guidelines, I'm not sure we could make those. We would...
Correct, those are, those are guidelines, I, the second part of it is, is the intent of city council that requests for public funds should adhere to the following procedures. It's, it's the intent, of course, it's not. All requests for funding shall be submitted to the city in writing prior to May first of each year, so that they may be considered in the budget for the next fiscal year. Property filed request for public funding shall be included within the budget billed and be discussed as part of budget workshops and public hearing schedule. It is entirely within the council's discretion whether to consider a particular request for funding in any particular budget year, and whether to grant or deny a particular request for funding and the level of funding to provide.
So, given that, I, I would feel hard pressed to say yes. One, I can't turn around and say, we can, say that this is going to promote the health, self, health, safety, welfare of the community. Two, we haven't complied with that ordinance, and that we didn't have the request by May first, so that we can consider it during the budget. And thirdly, I don't even know if it's in the budget. So those would be all my concerns.
Anyone else have anything to say? See none? Oops, I see one, go right ahead.
Thank you. So, if, if there's any extra, you can help me in making a decision, I welcome any context from, from what I heard, a couple concerns that I have, and so on and so...
He's asking you a question.
Yeah. Were there any other comments or questions that you had regarding that?
Yes, so everyone, I'm aware that everyone was cut back. We were cut back to zero. GTR receives no funding support or special event support, not, you know, as, as in helping with road closure and police officers and things like that. We got zero for two thousand eighteen. The reason why I didn't submit the Playland Festival of the Arts is because we don't need road closure, we don't need police officers, we're having it at Titus Landing. So therefore, the request was not submitted, as opposed to the other event that I did submit that was being, was going to be held... submit that was being, was gonna be held downtown and required the road closure and police officers. So my understanding is, the submission of the event for, by May 1st, was for that support from the city to cover the cost of those, not actually giving monetary support to the event. That's why I didn't submit it at the time. So, but I feel that this festival is an economic development driver. We are supporting a major project in Titusville, which is Titus Landing, in having this major event that incorporates several organizations that the city supports, in one way or another. And it will draw attention to Titusville. And so as far as helping with the welfare and so forth, it is a free event, and it's open to, it's handicap accessible. Everyone will be able to come and attend. And as we grow this festival, it will then become also something that we work with at schools and doing student field trips and things like that. So I think it, and when you look at it in that way, that it's educational, and it's supporting the arts, and arts ties in with healing, and then all of that ties in with economic development, I do feel, and that's, yeah, of course, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Member DeSche?
Yeah, I start off with some of the same concerns I've already heard. One of them is, we kind of went through the process, and now we're doing this. But I also like the aspect, the timing of this being at Titus Landing could be very beneficial to our boost. So, you know, I would like to hear more of what you guys are thinking. I do struggle, and I said that when we were going through all the activities and cutting this and cutting that. Nobody wants to cut anything. Everybody loves fireworks, everybody loves parades. We want to do everything. And this festival will be great. But we had to kind of go straight across and be fair to everybody, and so that's a concern. But I do think there's a benefit, and your efforts are obviously appreciated. But I do think there's a benefit to throwing something like this, throwing, that doesn't sound like a very good term, entertaining something like this in the middle of Titus Landing in early February? Early February. That's, that might be pretty beneficial.
Member Stokoe?
This is more for the city manager. When we were cutting the special event light items, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe, do we fund monetarily any events currently, or do we just do road closures, police, fire?
Yes, ma'am. As part of the consolidation of special events, council decided that they would not grant any monetary grants to any organization, that they would provide services, which is road closures, police, fire, and porta-potties as required.
Which goes back to what we did, and I, I mean, I hate to say this, but I feel like we were providing those services, and then this budget cycle, we even cut back on those services. And that's, this is where I struggle with the role of government. I think this event is awesome. I don't know where governments, our role in taxpayer dollars, goes into funding your event versus a separate event versus, I struggle with that a little bit, quite honestly. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Thank you. Vice mayor?
So here's my thought. I think, I believe that often when we looked at events for the community, the rationale was, there was a point in time in our community that, just quite frankly, we needed, and we still need, something to drive our community. And one of the roles that we were able to do was leverage capacity in order to achieve those things, and where there were gaps in our community. So as I use South Street Target area as a great example, where I think that we have identified a gap as a council, that there is something there. We tried to add leverage to it by helping with youth activities this year, and the intent would not to have to continue to funding these youth activities year over year over year over year, but the idea would, you get it over the hump. I wholeheartedly believe that arts are a portion of a community. If there's something that I learned through that downturn, is that's a real thing. And you can't have a full sense of community without the arts. Being said, I can't in good faith do it, and here's why. We got more money going out than we got coming in. We have a large deficit, period. We don't have enough money to pay the bills. We have a health insurance that is, I don't have an answer for. We got an OPEB at 72 million, courtesy of new policy. I, in good faith, I am gonna struggle really hard in speaking to you, everybody, balancing out, making adjustments or changes to retiree benefits, making adjustments or changes to just turn the lights on for salary, and balancing and saying, but we did go fund this in lieu of that. I can't do that, being as I felt responsible for the depth of cuts that we went through. We made that as a body, but I think that I, and I believe that was the right decision for this year. But I would, I would have, I wouldn't feel okay going back on that, as I feel that I really believe that that's what we have to do for this year. And so I don't downplay the arts. I don't think it's there this year. I don't believe that the city can do or leverage the capacity. For the sheer fact of, we leveraged that capacity in a different area to the tune of 30 grand this year, but to South Street Target area and youth activities and so forth and so on. So I think the money's spent, we just spend it somewhere else.
Anyone else like to speak? There isn't anyone else.
If I can.
Yes, certainly.
I think the idea is wonderful. We'd love to help. But when I listen to Mr. Broom reading that, our guidelines, I go, so I think you're doing something that's fantastic. But I agree with Mr. Barringer, we just don't have it in the budget. So...
Just the formality of, would anybody like to make a motion? Sorry.
Second informational items, we have an update on bus shelters. The notice to proceed will be issued on 2 January.
My apologies, sir.
He wanted to speak, but he was kind of not sure of it at the time.
Okay.
Can you just hold on for a second?
Sure. Well, if there was a motion that was necessary, I would make the motion then.
There's no motion necessary.
Right, then that was, that was it. That's all. Thank you. My apologies, sir. Thank you.
Back to informational item, we do have a timeline now on the bus shelters, finally. Notice to proceed will be issued on 2 January, with final completion on 30 April of 18. So there will be construction, and a priority list of those bus shelters has been established. We have upcoming in January, we have a community budget, our first workshop will be on the 27th of January, and the community block grant funding special meeting is on 30 January. And as this is our last meeting for the year, on behalf of the entire 505 employees here at the City of Titusville, we'd like to thank council for all your support this year. It's been a great, great year, very productive year, and we all are looking forward to a most productive 2018. Thanks for all that you do, serving your community.
And may I say that on behalf of council, but certainly council can speak for themselves, we appreciate all that you do and staff does, and they're doing a great job, and things are looking up for, the city of Titusville, if we can get our finances straightened out. But everybody's really keeping it together and keeping going, so we appreciate, and please tell the rest of the staff that.
We'll do. We'll pass it along. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
I have one, one other item. The CPT class, which we provide scholarships for, and the Space Coast EDC provides scholarships for. The new class starts in January, so people who want to apply need to contact either the city or EDC and get their applications in a 10-week class, and pretty much it guarantees that you will have a manufacturing job when you graduate. So...
Is it the Space Coast EDC or the EDC of Florida Space Coast? They're two different organizations. Is it the one down there, or is it the one that...
The one in Rockledge. The one in Rockledge.
Yeah, that's the EDC of Florida Space Coast.
Okay. I think I'm too tired.
I am too. Okay. Anything else that anyone has for the good of the order? If not, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.